This meeting to order, this is the Grand Charters County Board of Commissioners Special Budget Meeting. Today is Wednesday, the...
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth. If we could silence any cell phones or anything else, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is, next is the public comment, if we could have that, please.
Any person shall be permitted to address the meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the Board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized, and shall not address the Board until called upon by the chairperson.
Thanks, Bonnie. I did forget to do roll call, so if you would do that before we do public comment.
And I didn't catch it either. Inman?
Here.
Lathrow?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Here.
Rennie?
Here.
Thomas?
Yep.
Weelak?
Limkul.
Here. Thank you very much. Is there anybody from the public that would wish to speak at this time? Seeing nobody rushing to the podium, we will then go on to the next part of our meeting. It will be the discussion about the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. Bob, you're up.
Yes, this is the Prosecuting Attorney's Office Budget Review for 2014.
Isn't it looking at this? Is there anything you don't do?
Well, that's my point with it. And Bob Cooney, the prosecuting attorney, and I do want to carefully follow the guidelines that you gave us as far as the questions you wanted us to answer. And so the first thing that you wanted to know is, you wanted an overview of the services that we provide. And first of all, what I would say is that we are a constitutional office established by the Michigan Constitution of 1963. The county must fund our office at least to a serviceable level. Services we provide, there are 253 mandatory duties that the prosecuting attorney has, either by Constitution statute or order. And I've included in your packet Exhibit C, which lists all of those statutes. And there are some things in there that might be a little bit of a surprise to you. But anyway, I'll let you take a look at that. So for some of you, that's marked as Exhibit Three. Primary duties, of course, we prosecute all adult criminal cases, misdemeanors and felonies. We assist crime victims. Last year, there were 1,040 victims of crime that we assisted. We prosecute delinquency petitions, protection of abused and neglected children, which we do for the Department of Human Services. We assist and prosecute personal protection order cases. To continue, we assist law enforcement agencies, including the Traverse City Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, the Michigan State Police, the Department of Natural Resources, state agencies such as the Department of Environmental Quality, licensing regulations for the Department of Labor and Economic Growth, and others. We also establish child support for needy children. We establish paternity orders. We bring commitment petitions for mentally ill persons who are a danger to themselves or others and need to be hospitalized or otherwise treated. We represent and advise the county government and its various departments. Other mandated duties that you might not think of that we do, and I just pulled out a sampling here, we assist the treasurer with foreclosure proceedings. We petition for forfeiture of criminal proceeds. We bring civil forfeiture actions for neglected animals, to take those animals, or for dangerous animals that need to be unfortunately put down. We prosecute ordinance violations and civil infraction violations that go to a formal hearing. We also serve on the child death review team. Discretionary services, and these may be the ones that you're most interested in here, we screen and refer cases to specialty courts. And although that's a discretionary function, I think it would be unwise to think of that as something that we shouldn't do. The courts receive substantial grant funding, at least through the sobriety court, for the cases that we refer to. That court, and it's fairly well-accepted at this point that those courts are doing a great deal of service to the community and getting people on the right track as far as treating alcohol and drug addiction, and getting people into mental health court or receiving services and counseling for domestic violence. We also serve on specialty court review teams, and those are the teams that make sure that we're following proper policy, setting policy, and again, screening cases and deciding which cases go to those courts. And I think that's an important use of our time. If we don't do that, we're taking our hand off the steering wheel, I would say, as far as making sure that those cases are followed up on appropriately. We also answer questions for the general public, business owners, and other local units of government. That's something that we've always done in our office. I suppose we don't have to answer the phone when the general public calls and they have a question that they think might be criminally related, but we've always done that, and I feel it's a good service if it's something that we can answer off the top of our head or spend five minutes finding a statute for somebody. We've always done that, and we always have an on-call prosecutor scheduled each day of the week to take those types of calls. We also provide law enforcement training, providing legal updates for our law enforcement officers is actually a mandatory function. But beginning next month, as I've done every year since 1999, I provide core training for our law enforcement officers for the Traverse City Police Department and the Sheriff's Office. And that helps fulfill their M. Cole's requirements by providing them the latest updates as far as new legislation affecting the criminal laws and new case law, as well as basics of arrest, search, and seizure, and those types of issues. I also serve on various boards, and I just listed a few there. Nearly everything we do is mandatory. As you can see from that list, I've listed both mandatory and discretionary functions. As far as customers, you wanted to know who our customers are. Of course, the prosecuting attorney represents the people of the state of Michigan, and more specifically, the people of Grand Chavers County. And so we represent society in these cases. We also, of course, represent crime victims. We work with law enforcement agencies. We are on call, I should say, I'm on call 24/7 to answer questions that law enforcement officers have about arrest, search and seizure, search warrants. We also do weekend warrants because felony cases or arrests that are made on the weekends, we have to have a warrant to hold those people on some type of interim bond. We also are a contract service provider for the Department of Human Services. That's for our child neglect and abuse cases, as well as welfare fraud cases. We also serve the courts. I have ripple effect here because of what I wanted to touch on is the fact that not just the courts, but also law enforcement agencies, there's a ripple effect if we're not doing our jobs effectively and efficiently. If we show up, we're not prepared, if we don't have the right witnesses, if we haven't properly prepared our arguments for the court, it wastes time, it wastes resources. You don't want a jury to show up and find out that the key witness for the case isn't there for a trial or something like that, because then you have to reschedule those things. And so there is a ripple effect if we're not doing our jobs effectively. And that's true, not just for the courts, but I think for law enforcement agencies as well. If we've got six witnesses subpoenaed for a case because we didn't properly check over the case and make sure we're only subpoenaing those witnesses that we truly need for a hearing, then we've wasted some officer's time because he's out serving all those subpoenas instead of on the road doing other things that might be more important. And of course, another customer is you folks, the Board of Commissioners, and the various departments of the county who we provide civil advice to. Number of customers served in 2013, you asked about that. These numbers come from our adult case-tracking system. And I'm going to warn you, those numbers, I've found that there's a lot of mistakes that are made in those, and I'm not sure where it comes from as far as why those mistakes happen. So I'm just going to caution you on that. But anyway, I provided those as Exhibit B or Exhibit Number Two. We reviewed 3,369 criminal cases last year. Of those, we authorized 399 felony cases, 1,062 felony counts, 2,094 misdemeanor cases. There were, again, 1,040 crime victims amongst those cases that were authorized. We authorized 67 child abuse and neglect petitions. There were 284 child support referrals, 66 child support orders entered. That's a concern of mine, because that's a low number. It should be more than double that. I'll talk about that a little bit more later. There were 332 juvenile delinquency petitions reviewed and 253 cases authorized, 45 alleged mentally ill cases. Those are those commitment proceedings that we bring. All in all, there were 12,311 court events that were scheduled from those criminal cases. This will not include the hearings that we attend in family and probate court, only district and circuit court. There were 185 jury trials, eight bench trials in circuit court. We did 17 jury trials, and I just highlighted a few of those. Six of them were CSC first cases. Those are cases that invariably involve children, very young children, 12 and under, who were sexually assaulted, raped, essentially. Two attempted murder cases, which I tried myself, one involving an AK-47 that was fired at two of your sheriff's deputies and a conservation officer, and one meth lab case. Why are these services important? The first, justice for crime victims, of course. Protection of civil rights of defendants. Crime prevention and deterrence. One thing I would point out is that crime, in my opinion, metastasizes over time if it's not treated. And if you let crime go, if you don't take care of the problem, it's kind of like Judge Benedict used to say, if we take care of the small things, we won't have to worry about the big ones. Rehabilitation, saving lives and families. Most people think of prosecutors and punishment, but one thing that we do is we get these people, you know, by bringing charges, by getting people into domestic violence and sobriety court, and otherwise getting them into the court system, is we get them the treatment that they need, whether it's alcohol or drug treatment, mental health services or treatment for domestic violence. And it's not just the people that we charge, it's all the families of those people that we charge who are affected by providing those types of services. Protection of children and vulnerable adults by providing parenting skills to those folks, we get them in the system so that those types of skills can be provided. Removing children from abusive situations, unfortunately, most of the time these days, those abuse and neglect situations involve sexual abuse against children. Providing financial resources for children through our Child Support and Paternity Program. One thing I'd ask you to think about is that by assuring that a father who brings a child into this world is on a hook for providing financial resources for that child, we're saving the state money, because a lot of times, otherwise, a single mom might go and apply for various social welfare programs if they weren't receiving that money. That's why the state fully funds that program, because they know that in the long run, it saves them money, and so the county isn't really paying for that. But it's an important service that we provide. Why are these services important? Quality of life. I think if you look at any survey of the best communities to live in, one of the factors that they always consider is, what is the crime rate in that city? Property values, of course, county revenues are linked to property values, and I think property values are closely linked to both quality of life, and that's affected by the crime rate. Also, the effect of our office on other government services. The prosecutor is the pass-through from law enforcement to the courts. What we do in our office, even though it's a small office, it affects a lot of people and a lot of other agencies. When you consider all of the police agencies that we provide services to, and all the folks who work in the various courts, as well as other county departments that we provide legal services for. And risk management through our assistance with the Board of Commissioners and civil work, I like to think that we probably avoided a few lawsuits over the years. You also asked about our office staff, and we have six assistant prosecutors for a total of seven attorneys in our office, seven and three-quarters support staff. One of our secretaries works 30 hours a week. That includes three legal secretaries, the part-time secretary, receptionist, office manager, victims advocate, and a child support specialist. All of those positions, except the part-time secretary, have been in our office at least since 1990. The only new position is the part-time secretary, who was added in 2001. I've provided this chart to give you an idea of where we're at as far as attorney staffing levels. We're still below 1999 staffing levels. You can see that back in, around 1998, we started adding attorneys. And these numbers don't tell the whole story, because we had two positions that for a portion of the time were grant-funded, our narcotics prosecutor, our domestic violence prosecutor. That grant money went away for one reason or another. And so we used to get more assistance as far as being able to provide more attorney support. But anyway, if you look at where we're at here in 2013, when the Board agreed to add back another prosecutor who was cut in 2010, we're still where we're at now over here. You have to go back to 1998 to have that same level of the number of actual attorneys in the office doing work. And I've talked about the county's population in the past, and as you know, since 1990, the county has increased by about 25,000 people. And this is just a comparison of our staffing levels for attorneys versus the county population. There's a certain amount of crime that is certain, it's simply endemic to any population. You're going to have a certain amount of domestic violence, you're going to have a certain amount of child abuse, CSC cases, no matter what you do about it. And population certainly is going to affect the amount of crime. As far as staff, other than attorneys, this chart shows that we have about the same number of staff, actually a little bit less than we had back in 2000. This is going back to 1990 again. We have a little bit less, because you can see here, last year, I cut one staff member, and that was our child support specialist. And I mentioned earlier that we had about half the number of orders filed establishing paternity and support, and I was concerned about that. And I think that the reason for that is because we cut the staff position. We had difficulty filling the position, and we're just to a point now where we're back to, I think, where we were with having trained that new person, and I think that had a big impact upon the number of orders that we established. I'm not quite sure that that's the reason, but I'm, like I say, I'm very concerned about it, and I'm looking into it. I don't think, it's a concern, because again, we've filled that position now, that person is receiving proper training, and I think we're going to be back where we were and maybe do some catch-up and have more petitions than normal next year. This is a comparison, again, of population versus our staff numbers. Let me just go back to that for a minute. You notice that we have fewer staff, even though the population keeps going up and up, and I think I can explain that because of technology. Back in 2000, around 2009, 2010, the Board agreed to spend a substantial amount of money on software, our on-base program, which I think has saved our office quite a bit as far as staffing goes. But over the years, technology in general has saved us from having to increase the number of staff. And so I think this trend makes a lot of sense. It doesn't help us as far as having attorneys in the office, but it certainly helps us with maintaining the number of staff that we have. You asked about changes that may impact revenues and services. I already mentioned population, implementation of new software. Part of my strategic plan that I outlined last year for you was the need to get our law enforcement agencies e-filing their police reports. What that does is, rather than one person at the Sheriff's Office putting data into a file and then us doing it all over again at the prosecutor's office, it saves that duplication of services. And that's the way that you can save money over time. I had a number last year of about $75,000 that the ImageSoft folks wanted in order to do this. It may be cheaper this year, just because they've done the same thing down in Lenawee County now, and I'm going to look into what the costs are to do this. But over the long run, even spending $75,000 would make a whole lot of sense. It'd be a drop in the bucket compared to the money that you might save over the long run. And that's the way to keep from increasing staff as we see the county's population increase, anyway. I talked to Todd Ritter over at the jail about assistance with collection of jail fees. He thinks there may be another $180,000 that we could be collecting if we had staff dedicated to collection of jail fees, and I've told him that's something that our office would certainly assist with 100 percent. We've found out that there's a cut in Michigan Justice Training Funds, that the legislature has basically cut a lot of money that they had set aside for training prosecutors. It sounds like a drop in the bucket, but it's about $2,000 out of our training budget, which is $7,500. That's about $500 per person in our office, not much to begin with. So that's a hit we didn't want to see. Other changes, we still have some 4D and 4E grant funding that we're not completely using, and, you know, it may be that we're able to find other ways to use that money. We have, if you look at the numbers in Exhibit B, what you'll notice is an increase in the caseload. We increased our misdemeanor cases about 15 percent last year. Our felony cases increased over 40 percent. And with those increases, it's kind of a mixed bag. It increases both fees and costs that are received by the courts and other agencies as a result of the increased caseload. At the same time, it increases the expense, because we share the circuit and district courts with Antrim and Lelandaw Counties, and it's based on the number of cases that we bring. Changes in the marijuana law could have a substantial impact on our office, because I think we prosecuted about 180-some marijuana violations last year. And you might have heard that there's some talk in the legislature about legalizing marijuana in general, or at least making medical marijuana available at pharmacies. I just wanted to talk real briefly about revenues. We are not a revenue-generating agency, but what we do is necessary for the generation of revenue for other agencies, including court fines and costs, specialty court grant funding, forfeiture money, and traffic fines. Our office doesn't see a dime from any of those, but other agencies depend upon those funds. And so I think it's important to think about that. We do receive grant funding, both for our neglect and abuse cases, welfare fraud cases. We get money from the Department of Corrections for prosecuting those types of, the prisoner cases that we bring. But other than that, we're a revenue-neutral department. And some general concerns, and I'm getting toward the end here, but you'll bear with You know, I take it very seriously that the Board needs to make one and a half million dollars in cuts. That's a lot of money to come out of our general fund. And, you know, I've tried to think about our staffing levels. I've showed you what our staffing levels are. I've showed you where we're at historically. My concern is that if you have insufficient resources to plan and administer your office effectively, you start making mistakes. Mistakes are costly. They're not just costly for us, they're costly for police agencies when we drop the ball, they're costly for the courts when we drop the ball. And I think we miss out on a lot of opportunities, because we don't have the resources to explore other grant funding and other sources of revenue. You also asked about suggestions for alternative ways of providing current services. I can tell you, outsourcing in our office doesn't make a lot of sense. We have hired contract attorneys before, and, you know, through the courts, actually. I can think of one instance where we did that, and ended up paying the attorney about double what it costs any of our attorneys in our office to provide similar services. And that's because there are outside costs of running an office without all the support of the county. Merger with other entities, although I've explored merging our child support and paternity person with the friend of the court's office, that's a cost-neutral proposition. I don't think there's any savings to be had there. And I really don't know of any other types of mergers that we could do that would save money, but I'm always open to suggestion. Again, I want to mention that technology is the way to maintain or reduce staff, and I'm going to apply for another technology grant in order to try to get this e-filing accomplished, hopefully in the next year. But if I don't, I'm going to come to this Board, and I'm going to say, you know, you really need to spend this money. It just makes complete sense to do it. One other thing I've considered is whether maybe we should be asking the courts to tack on a fee to our drunk-driving cases and possibly our domestic violence cases. We do about 400 drunk-driving cases a year, 240 domestic violence cases. A $150 charge with 400 cases would probably fully fund one of the prosecutors in our office, and that's about how much time is spent just handling drunk-driving cases. The law does provide for assessing the cost of drunk-driving prosecution on defendants. I've talked about technology, and skip past that. I've talked about technology, and skip past that. You asked the question, how would I implement general fund budget reductions? First thing I would do is I would look at which services are mandatory and which services are discretionary. Obviously, the mandatory services, those are things that you have to provide. The discretionary ones, you have to prioritize which services you think are the most important to Grand Traverse County residents, and decide whether any cuts are possible. I think whether it's a mandatory service or a discretionary service, you need to go through each of those budgets and look, is there needless staff? Are there needless expenditures being made? I think you should also consider which offices are already lean and which ones there may be some room for cutting. And the prosecuting attorney's office cut $167,000 in actual expenditures from 2012 to its 2013 budget while increasing the number of attorneys. That sounds like a small number for the whole general fund budget, but that's an 11 and a half percent decrease in actual expenditures for our office from last year. We've reduced our budget to, I think it's 1.45 million dollars this year, down from 1.58 million, to reflect the fact that we spent a lot less money last year, and that represents an 8 percent budget reduction from 2013 to 2014. Just a short budget overview, again, here in 2012, our budget was 1.568. We spent 1.52. 2013, our budget went up slightly, probably due to cost-of-living adjustment, and actual expenditures were significantly less. And in 2014, we're budgeted to spend 1.458. In conclusion, my opinion is that our staffing levels are adequate. They're not exactly where I'd like them to be, they're not ideal, but they're adequate. We're getting by. I think we're providing effective, efficient service to both our law enforcement agencies, the county government, and the courts. I think we're able to provide all of the services that are listed in Exhibits C and Exhibit 1. Our other expenditures, which are only about 12 percent of our budget, 88 percent is personnel cost, more than 88 percent. If you look at the other 12 percent, I think what you'll find is that most of that is fixed cost. We spend a little less than $20,000 on legal research software. I've gone through by hand, I've eliminated every print subscription I possibly could. We have one bookshelf in our office, whereas we used to have a whole library. What we depend on is legal research software, and we've got really good stuff out there. But it's, I think it's what the county board wants, is for us to have the best legal research software available. That's the tool of our trade. Again, our budget is down about 8 percent from 2013. Actual expenditures were down 11 and a half percent in 2012. And again, I just want to mention that the way to keep our expenses down in our office are to make some investments in technology. I don't think we're talking about huge amounts of money, but we need to stay up to date. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
All right. Just got a couple, Mr. Chairman. First, just a comment that I'm concerned that the space that we have given you in your office is inadequate, and it's an aging building, and it's not functional, in my opinion, and I'm concerned about that aspect of your department. And I'm hoping that in, oh, in this year, '14, we can somehow, once we get through the budget, try to find you something acceptable, hopefully internally, that would be a larger space, more functional, and then maybe that might be the time where we might want to address some technology enhancements. I'm concerned about, you know, the continuation of your space and that old structure that you're currently operating on, or just as a current comment. Another issue, another comment I have is, I think you've been ahead, personally, I think you've been ahead of the curve with regard to the reduction of expenses over time. And you're right, there are some departments within the county that are at bare bone, and that is represented by the reduction of prior-year budget problems that we've gone to departments and asked for, you know, some concessions. And you have done so while the county has grown in population by 10,000 people over the last 10 years. So those are some attributes, I think, that go on your plus side, as well as your assistance in the civil counsel process, which, in my opinion, has continued to spend more and more time at the county board level, assisting in legal opinions and representing the county in matters where we haven't brought in outside counsel. So that's been a significant savings. So I guess those are all, I think, are all great pluses on your side for us to not weigh heavily on your area when we look at reductions. The only thing I would have you do is a concern for the weighting of a number of cases for your number of staff load. I don't know if you've got some numbers from the Prosecutors Association from the state as to the number of cases per load, per prosecutor, and if we are overwhelming our staff with the number of cases, or are we at the average? That'd be just a quick question I'd have you look at. But I think you, I think you and your predecessors have been, have been ahead of the curve, and I'm not sure how much more we can really pull out.
Chris?
Bob, you mentioned the DUI fees that you could assess. It is my personal opinion that if you're driving drunk and get caught, first of all, you shouldn't be driving drunk. If you do get caught, it should be expensive. What would we have to do to begin assessing a fee?
Well, I think, well, this is certainly a question that's for the courts. They would have to be on board with that idea. Of course, their concern is that they already are hitting some of these folks with a lot of costs and expenses, and I'm not sure that they're going to tolerate one more. And I think we've had this discussion over the years, maybe a couple of different times, about whether there was some way we could include a fee. To me, it makes sense. We're targeting the folks who are the cause of the problem in OWI cases, and if that, and like I say, I'll bet we, with 400 drunk-driving cases, and that includes our felony drunk drivings, drunk-driving causing death and serious injury cases, which can eat up quite a bit of time, you know, I bet we devote about three-quarters of a prosecutor just to those types of offenses. So it's something I'm certainly willing to take up with the judges, but there are a lot of concerns about it.
Yeah. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but this is something that I would like to pursue. People need to take taxis, you know, rather than go out on the road. So what's our next step, if there is one?
Dave?
Does the city, has the city passed a resolution or done anything to institute a drunk-driving fee, a driver responsibility fee, or whatever it's called at the local level?
Yeah. We do collect a fee on behalf of the law enforcement agency that makes the arrest. Our office doesn't get any part of that, but I think it's a $125 fee that we assess, whether it's the city police or the sheriff's office. So there is some money coming back as far as prosecution, or as far as law enforcement is involved, but not as far as our office.
Yeah, and is that the same as this fee, in that the judge has to levy it?
Yeah. What the statute says is that the court may assess the cost of prosecution, so.
So you can say you're going to do that and ask the judges to consider putting that fee on someone, but they may or may not.
Dan?
Oh, yeah. What do you estimate, I mean, can you give me an estimate of what it costs us to answer the published legal questions? You said you had a person assigned to that every day, an on-call attorney. Sounds like a lot of work. How many calls you get? What do you think it costs us to provide that service?
You know, I'd have a very difficult time putting a number on it. It's more of a, I don't want to call it annoyance, because it's not. I understand why people, their first thought is to call the prosecutor's office, and a lot of times, it's simply referring them to the appropriate agency, or we can tell them very quickly what the answer is, or what statute to look at, something like that. But I would say on an average day, we might get four or five calls from some member of the public. If it's a local township or a village, I do get quite a few of those calls from trustees and that type of thing, and I'm very glad to answer their questions if I can, or try to get them to the right person. In terms of trying to put a dollar figure on it, you know, it's more, it's something that, you know, you'll be in the middle of a project, you get the call, you take the call, and you might do a little bit of research. I try to instruct my attorneys that if it's going to take you more than five minutes to answer that question, and it's not really something our office has to do or needs to do, then it's time to refer them to someone else.
I have a couple more questions.
I'm going to move this along, because the sheriff department has a long presentation. We're going to be here half the night, so if we could just kind of wrap up our questions, but go ahead.
Okay, one more then. You said technology can help us out. Do you have any idea if we bought you the technology you wanted, how much it would save us in FTE? Would it?
Well, you know, I think it's possible that after maybe a couple years of implementation, we could be looking at saving a half FTE, maybe more than that.
Yeah, and you don't have to pay insurance costs on a computer, you know, like you do an FTE person.
Well, all, everything that goes into the salary and benefits of an FTE.
Thanks.
Real quick, Bob, we took on some, and did some legal help for our local units of government. One was this property tax thing. How much of an impact has that had on your office?
Well, you know, I can't really speak to that too much, because Chris is the one that's been involved with that. And, you know, I know he's certainly spent some amount of time, but I don't know of any case where he's, you know, spent a whole day in a hearing or something like that. So I would have to get that from him.
But you don't feel it's exorbitant or anything like that?
Well, I'll follow up on that, and I'll ask Chris how much time he's spent on that.
Appreciate that.
Sonny?
Bob, Larry alluded to the fact about your physical housing arrangements, literally, because it was the former sheriff's house, actually. One of the concerns that I have, when we talk about a different facility for you, how critical is it that that facility be located immediately adjacent to the courts?
Well, in my opinion, let me start by saying, I brought this up at the strategic plan. You asked us to tell us what your plans were for the next five years, I think it was. And I, actually, what I said is it should be on your radar that our office probably needs to be moved, or we need to do something about it in the long-term future, not the near future. It's absolutely critical, in my opinion, that we be right there where the courts are. You saw 12,000-some court appearances just in district and circuit court alone, or court events that go on. That means we're physically getting out of our office, and we're going to those places. You're going to spend a lot of money just on mileage if we're, you know, located five miles away from the courthouse, going back and forth, and that's a big interruption to your day also, when you have to travel versus just walking across the sidewalk to get to the courthouse. So I think it's absolutely critical that we be here on the main campus, near all of the courthouses. The other thing that I would say is how critical is it that we change space? It's not critical, and that's why I didn't even bring that up in this discussion, because when we're looking at a $1.5 million structural deficit, the last thing I think we need to be thinking about is spending a lot of money to move the prosecutor's office. My primary concerns, and the reason I brought it up, is because we don't have enough space over there. We need a couple more conference rooms. You know, when I'm talking to a mom and her six-year-old daughter about a criminal sexual conduct case, you know, I'd kind of like it to be conducted with a glass wall where the receptionist can view everything that's going on, and yet there's privacy for those We could use a couple more conference rooms. We could use space for another victim's advocate, which I think we're still going to get grant funding from the Prosecutors Association to add that person, but I don't quite know where I'm going to stick them. We have people all the time asking if I've got room for an extern who could help us out in the office, but I don't have anywhere to put them. Those were my primary concerns, and that's one reason, frankly, why we're looking at maybe moving child support services to the friend of the court's office. That's very preliminary. I don't know if that's going to happen or not, but I've considered that, and I, you know, it would have to make sense to do that, in terms of, is this going to be the best thing for those cases? So that was my primary concern with the space, other than obviously the physical problems with that building.
All right.
Maybe the simplest solution would be to put an addition on that building.
If it's space.
When he needs it.
I think that's a good idea, actually. And with that work-release building now, as I understand it, completely dysfunctional, it seems like there's space over there, so. But we added on to the building once back around 1992, I think it was, so. They converted the garage to an office.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it, and thank you for all your employees and all the work that they're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the sheriff department and the jail. We get the techie people in here to change everything around. We appreciate you being here.
Good afternoon. You noticed I wasn't the techie person. I first want to give the board an overview of the sheriff's office 2014 budget, and the individual department heads will be speaking directly to their budgets. This past weekend, I sent to all the board members the presentation given at a prior meeting, which I think defended our staffing levels. The sheriff's office has five separate union bargaining units. As you know, our budget is approximately one-third of the overall county general fund budget. The 2014 approved budget for the sheriff's office is $13,610,902. And I believe you all have been provided with the various line item budgets for the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office and its functions and operation comprise 13 budgets. There are 90 different line items, with variances in the different budgets of between 12 up to 57 separate line items in those budgets. Those budgets range from under $10,000 to over $5.5 million. The individual line items range from $50 to $2.7 million. The line items are there to provide accountability for what we spend and how we spend it. The personnel costs, excluding overtime, are negotiated costs with the bargaining units. We have minimal, if any, control over these costs because of the contractual agreements with the county and the bargaining units. Our personnel costs account for 83.7 percent of the sheriff's office 2014 budget. This amounts to $11,402,676, and the only portion of the personnel And the only portion of the personnel cost that we really have any control with is the overtime cost. The 2014 overtime estimate is $292,000, of which $170,000 is for the jail, and $90,000 for patrol division. Remember, this is budgeted. As you know, with some changes in our staffing at the jail, in 2013, when the final figures are compiled, we expect to have saved approximately $50,000 in the jail overtime budget alone. As a side note, the sheriff's office cost for defined benefit retirement for 21 people is almost $1.4 million. That's 21 people, $1.4 million. The cost for the remaining 101 employees is $514,000. So, quick math, what you have is one-fifth of the people, excuse me, you have two-thirds of the people for a third of the cost. That's very expensive. Our operating for, budget for 2014, the operating budget is 16.3% of our total budget. Outside of our control is approximately $895,000 for jail medical services, MIS charges, county indirect costs, telephone services. Additionally, there is $275,000 budgeted for the jail food costs, $308,000 for vehicle gas, oil, and $93,000 for vehicle repair and maintenance. So, we start with $13,610,000, and we now have about $637,000 to make reductions without eliminating personnel. The reason we have 13 separate budgets and hundreds of line items is to provide accountability for the board and the public. It would be much simpler for us to have one budget and one line item to pay all our expenses, but that is unacceptable. Couple of comments regarding accountability. The animal control operation is understaffed and underfunded. That doesn't seem to be a concern because the sheriff's office picks up the slack. Any issues or complaints that occur after normal business hours, weekends, holidays, in the animal control unit are picked up by the sheriff's office. 80% of the time during the year, when animal control officers are unavailable, the sheriff's office takes the call. Recently, central dispatch stopped providing lean PPO entries, modification, and recalls for the sheriff's office, in addition to warrant entries, recalls, and various other lean services that they have been providing for 30 years. Part of the reason was because they were too busy to handle those tasks. For that service, the sheriff's office had been providing background checks for central dispatch employees. These were very thorough background checks, very similar to those done for our law enforcement, corrections, and records personnel. I wanted some more accountability than the quid pro quo, you scratch my back and I'll scratch your back, the way that those tasks were being done. How much time did it take? They didn't account for that time in any specific way because those tasks were done when the dispatchers were not busy, it was fill-in work or piecework. Those responsibilities were given to our staff in central records and at the jail. We've been able to estimate that the time needed to do these tasks turned over to the sheriff's office amounts to, close to one full-time employee. They do less, and we do more. This is another example of the sheriff's office taking more responsibility without additional personnel. In the past, to provide better accountability with our budgets, we have separated the ORV budget into one which is fully funded with, by the DNR, and one which is funded by the county to enforce the county's recreational or ORV ordinance. We removed one officer from the secondary road enforcement budget because the funding provided by the state was reduced to a level that would support only one officer, and previously, that budget reflected only half funding for two officers. Recently, we created a seasonal recreational vehicle supervisor because a sergeant was splitting time between the recreational vehicle division and the patrol division, and was an additional sergeant in the patrol division that did not fit into any specific position because we already had a sufficient number of patrol sergeants. With the retirement of a detective captain and a promotional process, we did not have the need then to promote an additional sergeant. You have asked for a list of services that the sheriff's office provides. The department heads will go into more detail during their presentations. The law enforcement division of the sheriff's department, the law enforcement division of the sheriff's office is responsible for law enforcement. Enforcing the laws of the state of Michigan, whether criminal, civil, or traffic, is a responsibility of the sheriff's office. Is that a service? We investigate complaints and arrest people. We stop cars and arrest people or issue citations. I would call that law enforcement. Do we provide service to people? Absolutely. Captain Clark will get into what kind of services the law enforcement division does provide. People call, and we respond. How many people do we serve? If you're in Grand Traverse County and make a call to central dispatch requesting help of some type, our officers respond. We do this 24 hours a day, 365 days of the year. This is a little different than Dr. Lethrith's office. He provides a service to people who are scheduled to come into his office at a certain time of the day. If he was required to be open 24 hours a day, and people could show up anytime they wanted to, it would make staffing his office a little more difficult. We don't have that luxury. We cannot schedule four one-hour appointments for next Tuesday between 8:00 a.m. and noon to handle a breaking and entering, a traffic crash, a larceny, or an in-progress domestic assault. The only area we are really able to consider for privatization or outsourcing would be in the records division. And all of our other divisions are staffed with certified law enforcement and corrections officers. We have a contract with the Traverse City Police Department for records management that may be a source of additional revenue. Because of the contract with the city police department, any steps in this direction would need to be discussed with them. I would suggest that because the old saying, strike while the iron's hot, if you've been reading the newspaper, they can't spend enough money. So we may want to sit down soon and talk with them. You have asked how we can increase revenues, and last week, we were given the opportunity to be more progressive in collecting unpaid jail housing and medical costs. Additionally, Captain Hall will propose that maybe county residents should be charged for their fingerprints, and he's looking into a video visitation program that would allow inmates to have a video visitation with people who do not live in the area. The law enforcement division is unable to provide any measurable net revenue. We cannot write more tickets to get more revenue. We cannot arrest more people to get more revenue. But, the law enforcement division does generate work and revenue for the prosecutor's office, courts, and the jail. The sheriff's office accounts for $2 million of the $2.9 million in revenue for the district court. This is approximately $41,000 for each patrol officer. And remember, more cops equal more criminals. Finally, and I know you're glad to hear that from me, our 2010 actual expenses were $12,602,000. In 2011 and 2012, the actual expenditures were both approximately $200,000 less than that. The 2013 estimated actual expenditures is $12,613,000. That's an increase, if you will, of only $11,000 in the past three years. Taking into account salary increases in each of the last three years of approximately $150,000 each year, which is a total of $450,000, I think that you could conclude that we have been very good at managing our budgets. Last Friday, all non-emergency and non-essential personnel were sent home, and Grand Traverse County closed at 3:00 p.m. The sheriff's office, however, called in additional law enforcement officers to take care of the very large increase in calls for service and to handle numerous traffic crashes. These actions by the county and the sheriff's office stamped a picture in my mind. You have all seen the same picture. That is the picture of people walking and running away from the World Trade Center buildings on September 11, 2001. And in that same picture, you saw police officers and firemen headed in the opposite direction, toward the World Trade Center buildings. That is what we do. First, and we take these in order of their budgets, Brenda Miller from the records division, followed by, I think, Captain Foulis. So, Brenda?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Central records provides the clerical support for Grand Traverse County Sheriff's Department and the Traverse City Police Department. We answer non-emergency phone lines, assist the general public, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We prepare and work with all the paperwork behind the scenes of law enforcement. Central records maintains all the police reports, accident reports, citations, and maintains and updates all of the electronic records created by law enforcement. Central records answers questions for our citizens either on the phone or in the lobby. Records will assist officers with their paperwork processing questions as well. We are moving forward with technology with the recent implementation of electronic citations or tickets, and now we are working on implementing electronic accident reports. We are experiencing some technical issues with the electronic citations as we are using incompatible equipment. Our approved 2013 budget was $920,627. Of this amount, $827,000 is allocated to personnel, IT costs, and county indirect costs, leaving a balance of $42,425. Central records generates about $170,000 in revenue from our contract with the Traverse City Police Department. Our department does have personnel that are required to work on the holidays and weekends as law enforcement is a 24-hour operation, and so is the generation of records that go with it. Our staff consists of 10 personnel and one office manager. We service 66 Grand Traverse County Sheriff's Office officers and 29 Traverse City Police Department officers. We have daily interaction with our prosecutor's office and the courts. The police reports are dictated by the officers, deputies, or detectives, and then transcribed by the central records personnel. Our department registers handguns and complete backgrounds in our CPLs, the concealed pistol license applicants. Our staff also prepares FOIA requests for both the Traverse City Police and the Grand Traverse Sheriff's Department. For 2013 alone, both departments together had processed 3,336 requests for FOIAs. We work with abandoned vehicles, NSF, non-sufficient fund, and account closed checks, prepare monthly stats for both the sheriff's department and the Traverse City Police. We submit our monthly mandated micro-information to the state of Michigan. We register sex offenders. We work with the liquor inspections that our officers complete. We work with various court orders, PPOs, the personal protection orders, warrants, warrant recalls, truancy reports, among many other tasks. As a snapshot of our current typing backlog, we have 22 priority reports to complete and approximately 180 non-priority reports to type. These dictated reports range in length from 30 seconds to as long as 54 minutes. We still have some dictated reports from back to July 1 of 2013 that still need to be transcribed. We have been trying different cost-saving measures, such as looking into the privatization of our typing, keeping some submitted reports as audio files, and not transcribing them until requested through FOIA, and having reporting officers report more themselves through our field-based reporting, which is their computers. Measures such as typing from home and/or having our typing outsourced are other items under review. Things that could impact services or revenues. A portion of current operation of central records is paid for by the city of Traverse City. The percentage is computed based on a number of report narratives as far as the size of those narratives, and based on the population. We believe that the entire contract with the city should be reevaluated, and the central records budget should be paid for by a percentage of the officers using the services of central records. As mentioned earlier, there's an option of having our personnel type at home and/or privatizing the typing. At present, we are reviewing how this process would work. There are technical issues at present that are making this cost prohibitive. The nature of work typed, the terms, the language, as far as used, is not familiar with the outsourced typists, and it creates more work at our end in trying to get that accomplished. There's also confidentiality issues in having typing outsourced and/or done outside of our law enforcement center. The one change in legislation due to take effect April 1, 2014, is that the sex offenders that reside in Grand Traverse County are going to be required to pay an annual fee of $50. $30 of that money goes to the state of Michigan to the sex offender registration program, and $20 is kept for us and is allocated for training, as noted in MCL 28725B. At our January 2014 verification, we had 250 sex offenders. This law does have a clause for indigent sex offenders, such that the individual claiming indigence has to prove the fact that they are indigent to us, the police department, so they would be voided of that fee. As the sheriff mentioned, the lean documentation is now housed with the sheriff's office versus central dispatch. This has provided an extra burden on our personnel, such that deputies will be making their own lean entries, thus tying up their time from doing real police work. For my schedule alone, this change in where lean is housed at has caused 30 to 40 hours of work extra each month in the tasks that I do. Alternate ways to provide services. We have restructured our lobby service October 1 of 2013 to focus more on the typing of reports. We have moved, we have one person working our lobby window and answering the phones. In addition, we moved one of our day shift personnel to an afternoon shift in order to gain more typing time. In addition, we are using automated answering menus for our phone systems as well. We have moved to the electronic submission of our accident reports. The sheriff's department has been doing accident reports on a paper form. We recently moved to the electronic version. When a citizen obtains a copy of our accident report off the internet, our department will get $6 per accident. When we process those requests for insurance, or from insurance companies right now, and we take it, and we copy the accident, we redact the information, and we receipt it out, so we receive a fee of a $5, so we're only getting the dollar increase, but we don't have to do the work. We will still provide copies of accidents at our window upon request, if needed. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Captain Randy Foulis, our detective bureau. Thank you.
Just a real question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do you want to do?
As individual areas are coming in, can we ask a quick question on each one rather than waiting to the end, or no?
That's your call. While it's fresh, that would be fine.
Okay. I just have a quick question, just a quick question, because it's been a while since I've been on one of the ride-along programs. It's been quite some time. It used to be, you know, we've got these new mobile data terminals, which was intended on, I think, freeing up some of the dispatch stuff, so they can get their own, run their own leans, their own file checks, those kinds of things, plates, those kinds of things. And during that time, when I was on several ride-around times, the officers would take time during their shift to, they'd have a little recorder, they'd go, time and number, you know, case number, da-da-da-da, it was signed, and then they would verbally just do the report in a cassette-type of recorder. And then when they get off shift, they would hand that cassette in, and then the person at records would type up the reports, officer would review it before it got to the command staff, and that's how it got filed. Now, has anything changed in that format, where the officers are now completing their reports without you going to recorder and typing and all that kind of stuff?
As far as the dictation, the officer has a handheld digital recorder now.
Okay.
And they actually record that, and when they come into the station, they dock it into our computer, and that voice transfers in to the computer.
Automatically types it up? Voice doesn't?
No.
Doesn't?
The central records ladies then will take that audio file and then transcribe it into the police report, into the narrative of the document.
Is there technology that will take the voice recording and automatically type the report?
There is some out there, yes.
Could we look into that?
I think at one time, there was some review of that, and there was so many altercations with the voice and reflections that it wasn't effective. So, I haven't, didn't do- So, I haven't, didn't do a full study on it. I know the city, I don't know if the undersheriff wants to address it.
All right, okay.
As an examiner, Mr. Dragon Swype, can you make her a drop?
Dragon Swype. I think the technology, this was a lot of years ago, that the city specifically had a program that Captain Heinz is working with to have his voice transcribed automatically. There was a lot of problems with it. The issue with, that we see, this should be tried, and it should be experimented with, but the issue that we experiences, there's a lot of formatting and editing that our police reports have to look a certain way and present a certain way for the prosecutor. The officers aren't always very disciplined and diligent in making sure those formatting things are there and in place, so the records girls and the sergeants actually supervise those reports, or review those reports, certify they're complete, and then submit them back to the records division for submission.
So other than accident reports, which officers files at the scene, is my understanding, in good old days?
That, well...
The other reports, the other complaints and files, they are verbally kicked in and then sent over to prosecutor's office, whatever?
That is somewhat correct, yes. The officers from their field-based reporting module on their laptops can actually completely do a report. Records personnel still has to grab that report and make sure that it's properly formatted and prepared for submission to prosecutor's office.
All right. Thanks.
Dan? Well, I just, we use Dragon in my office, and I know that it's, even last year, it's been upgraded. It handles some pretty complex stuff. So, you know, I wonder if there's any other departments that are using Dragon or something like that?
I'm certain there is.
Yeah.
I just saw an advertisement not too long ago about the new improved Dragon, and it's not very expensive.
Yeah.
At least for a private use perspective. I don't know what it would be in a public platform.
There might already be, I know for medicine, they've, they've worked on it, so it's particular to medicine, and they probably have it for a while, too. I'm kind of interested, I didn't catch what you said about outsourcing the typing. You said it couldn't be done or shouldn't be done?
We did a preliminary test where we took six police reports and had an outside agency type them, and then when they came back into the system, there was a lot of technical issues that we experienced in taking what they provided for us and putting it back into our system, as well as there was a lot of the verbiage that we in law enforcement use, like a sane nurse, they put seeing nurse. Well, it's totally different, you know, as far as that, so...
And one thing we cannot do is allow an outside entity or a private company or corporation to see our law enforcement records. So if, if you, if there's a person out there that has a similar name, similar date of birth, or you get the wrong person on a police report and ship that to the prosecutor's suspect or in-your-in-house record somehow as a suspect instead of a victim or witness, and the records personnel does not grab that, check it, and make the connection, that could be a major problem for us.
I have just one other question.
Chris is up there.
No, I was just going to say something about Dragon because I've been researching some transcription software myself, but Dan covered it.
Okay, Larry.
So, when you, when you complete a report from an officer's recording?
Mm-hmm.
Is that transcribed on a form within your, within a particular software, so it has the ability to, not only is it formatted always in the same way for particular complaints, but is it, is it, you have the ability to electronically transfer that, that file to the prosecutor's office, and any other issues with that particular report can be electronically controlled rather than going to physically find the file, physically finding the report, physically pulling it out, going to a copy machine, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
With the software that we have, the New World Systems software, when we transcribe into the actual police report location in the computer, that can then be sent to the PAO prosecutor's office by electronic, but there's different forms that also generally will go with the report, so it's just a matter of getting those additional documents compiled together and then sent to them. We did even look at maybe scan to email at one time, but we kind of halted at one point as far as reviewing that.
Yeah, I was just looking at, you know, from the actual inputting of the information, are there any efficiencies that we can utilize going forward?
Yep, there are some possibilities.
All right, okay. Thank you.
What's up?
Good job.
Hello?
What did you do?
Well, let's just say a 43-year-old guy trying to be 23 again.
Oh, boy.
Footballing with some younger guys and didn't really work out in my favor.
That wasn't part of the guns and hoses, was it?
Uh, no, it was not.
Okay.
So, I get it.
Actually, it was a plan for today's budget meeting, so, you know.
Yeah, well...
They're still crippled over there.
Sympathy built.
By the way, I just wanted to say we're sorry about the loss of one of your K-9 units at the department.
Oh, thank you.
So...
Thank you.
Now, do we have to look at replacing that one?
Well, yeah, that was our explosives K-9, so we don't, we don't have one now, so yeah, I'm sure that's something that we'll be trying to deal with here in the near future, so...
That one will be affected by the hiring freeze.
Good.
Well, my name's Randy Fueles, I'm the new captain in the investigative services division. Captain Meacham, with his retirement, created the vacancy. I slid over from the road patrol division, Captain Spott, which Captain Clark now holds. And so I'm just gonna go over 311 and 312, those two budgets, for you. I'll try and speed my presentation up a little bit for you, but please, at the end, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. 311 is obviously the smaller of the two budgets. Basically, what that consists of is our two deputies, detectives, that are working in the Traverse Narcotics Team. For those of you not real familiar with that, better known as TNT, that's a multi-jurisdictional narcotics enforcement task force, which is made up of deputies and officers in our north team of TNT, of officers from Antrim County, Calcasas, Leland, ourselves, the Traverse City Police Department, and then the Michigan State Police Sergeant, Lieutenant, and a trooper. The sergeant and lieutenant from MSP directly supervise that unit, so we have two of our officers in that. The total budget expenditures under that line item are a little over $188,000. And then the second officer in there is partially funded by a grant that's estimated to be roughly about $40,000 this year. So, those two guys are in there, like I said, it's a multi-jurisdictional thing, it's comprised of officers from different agencies. Basically, I think their primary function is to try to find out the primary sources of the narcotics use and trafficking in our area and take law enforcement action on that. Obviously, crime, violent crime tends to increase in areas where there's a lot of narcotics use and trafficking, so the better they can be at their job, the better our community is gonna be. They, their 2013 statistics, I tried to get, they're not compiled yet. I looked at some 2012 ones, just to give you a brief idea. They, that north team initiated about 137 cases in 2012, which a third of those, 49, were in Grand Traverse County. And of the 129 arrests they made in 2012, over half of those were in Grand Traverse County, so that may be related to, you know, an investigation initiated in Calcasas County, but actually the trafficking was occurring over here, that they were actually selling the drugs, so the arrests took place here. So, just kind of a couple numbers on that. That's a plainclothes unit. They conduct surveillances, do drug buys, seize property, take enforcement action on those types of activities. So, I won't belabor the point on 311 anymore, but if you guys have questions when I'm done, please feel free to, feel free to ask. Moving on to 312, so that's gonna be comprised of myself, the captain, one detective sergeant, Chris Barshew, and six other detectives. Total expenditures on that are $941,054, and the total revenue under that line is almost $83,000, which is paid to us by Garfield Township for paying for the detective that they contract with us for. In essence, to give you kind of a, if I had to explain what the detective bureau does in a sentence or two, I would say that it's the sheriff's department's way of being able to prioritize the serious crimes and major incidents that we have in Grand Traverse County. Our road patrol deputies on any given day could have no investigation time. If it's a day where they run new crashes, and then do a domestic, and then do a breaking and entering, their investigative time isn't there. So, what our detective bureau is able to do is to take these serious incidents that occur in our county and devote whatever time and resources are necessary to try to bring those to successful conclusions. We handle crimes against persons, and those can be homicides, robberies, felonious assaults, child pornography, abductions or attempts, to name a few. We also delve into property crimes such as home invasions, business break-ins, arsons, financial crimes, could be embezzlements, internet crimes, high-dollar frauds, some of the other investigations, just typical death investigations. When somebody dies, we need to, whether it's criminally related or not, we need to find out why that occurred. We do liquor license investigations, sex offender registry violations, locate fugitives for our department and other departments that contact us with need, attempt to locate missing persons. We work really closely in the detective bureau with the other agencies, law enforcement agencies, and investigative agencies in our areas such as the FBI, the IRS. We also conduct background investigations on applicants for our department as well. The detectives that we, that Chris and I supervise have anywhere from eight years to 28 years of experience, so we've got a really good, hard-working group back there now that has a lot of law enforcement experience that we're able to tap into. They are, the importance of their jobs is that we, they have a responsibility with these major incidents and crimes that they have to be very thorough, they have to put whatever time in as necessary and take accountability for those cases, do whatever search warrants may be needed, travel outside the area to locate witnesses, additional victims, suspects, whatever that might be, they are responsible for that. Part of our job in the detective bureau is to try and foster as many relationships as we can. From a law enforcement perspective, we actually host at our department every month an area detectives' meeting, so we have detectives coming from all of the area departments, the FBI agents come, again, the IRS postal inspectors, you name it. We get them and we're able to share information and try to link crimes that may be occurring in other counties that maybe they have suspects for that we don't have yet, and we can link those and link suspects, and so those relationships with the other entities are very important. That, the relationships also delve a lot deeper into that, into the community. We have detectives that go to hotel association meetings, bank association meetings, child death review meetings. We kind of try and get our detectives out to a lot of these because the more contacts we have in our community, that's where the information comes from, and we realize that and want to make sure we're doing our due diligence to make sure our faces are seen and that people know who we are so that we can, when we have a need on a serious incident, that we're able to go and get whatever information we do need. 444 complaints were handled in the detective bureau last year. That would include our, our computer lab detective, and I'll briefly go into those here in just a minute. The detectives rotate an unpaid on-call status. They are compensated if they get called in, but we rotate those guys so that there's a detective on-call at all times, and they're required to stay in the area, and that if we need them, they're required to respond at a moment's notice. And it's a team concept. When we get major incidents, a bank robbery, or some type of complaint that's gonna require a tremendous amount of follow-up, we'll allocate all of our detectives to make sure that we are, again, are doing our due diligence to make sure that the victims in our community are taken care of. I'll try to be brief with this, I just wanted to, we've got the six detectives other than the TNT guys. Detective Ritter is assigned as the Garfield Township detective, so he's, he's assigned the major incidents in, in Garfield Township, so he handles the majority of those. They're our busiest township, so he's handling anything from a fraud, to an arson, to a death investigation on any given, given day. So, so he's one of those six. Another one of those six is Jason Otting, who is our computer lab forensics guy. He's got a computer forensics degree through Ferris State University. He does all of our forensic exams on the multimedia stuff such as the cellphones and the computers, things of that nature. He's a member of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force and has extensive training in these areas. We make sure that we try to continually keep him educated. Every day, criminal is coming up with a new way to use some type of media device to make victims out of people, so we need to really keep up on that. He did forensic exams on 104 devices last year, and probably the most important thing, if I could say about that position that we have, having a computer lab guy, we're able to give him a computer, if I told him today, here's a computer, I need you to do a forensic exam on that, I could have those results back almost immediately to get to Bob Cooney so that we could put a bad guy in jail, get them off our streets, and prevent any other victims from being there. The, the general turnaround, if we were to send that same computer to the Lansing Crime Lab and ask for a forensic exam, the turnaround is gonna be anywhere from six months to 12 months to get that information. That allows the perpetrator to roam our community and victimize more citizens during that time, so that's been a really a great tool for us to have here so that we can, for lack of better terms, take care of business and do it, do it quickly and get those reports to the prosecutor. Two of our other detectives, Jana Morton and Mike McTucci, they are basically assigned all of our Department of Human Services referrals. What those are, those are the Child Protective Services referrals that we get. Last year, they investigated approximately 140 of those. We get the referrals in, and then we'll either do a joint investigation with CPS, or if it's not family-related, then that's all on us. Jana and Mike have special training in interviewing child victims, as well as investigating and interviewing the suspects in those cases and dealing with those families. They're very good at their job. They work real tight with the Children's Advocacy Center. That's where we do the majority of our child interviews. It's set up for those interviews, and they also have additional resources for families and things like that, so our relationship with them is, is integral in taking care of those types of situations. So, so they basically stay busy on those. So, that leaves me with two detectives left, Mike Trombley, who's been a police officer, deputy sheriff with us for 28 years, and Paul Gomez, who has 25 years of police experience. They are, have to be jack-of-all-trades, too. They're handling anything, any realm of anything else that comes in and have to be very well-trained to do that. And I would just say that those guys, for the little over a month that I've been back there, it just, every day, I mean, I just see the energy that those guys are, are putting out, putting forth in these investigations, and due to the importance of the investigations that we're handling in the detective bureau, it has to be that way, and that's part of my responsibility to make sure that continues that way, too. So, just a quick couple more things. As the captain back there, again, I'm responsible for the budget, the expenses, all the equipment, the personnel assignments. It's also my responsibility to review and supervise all of the cases, the reports that come through, to make sure that those investigations are being completed, are being completed properly, and that we're doing everything we can to resolve whatever situation it might be. You heard Bob Cooney talk about FOIA. We, I talked to Brenda a little earlier today, we're estimating that the county, which is basically me, about 1,700 reports go out the door, went out the door last year on the county side. Captain Meacham would have had to actually look at 1,700 reports to make sure that we're not putting information out there that can't be out there and can hold the county liable for things like that. So, that's a, a time-consuming job, too, that, that I'm having to accomplish there. Media contacts, and then, as Chris will tell you, day-to-day, today I came in and thought that I was halfway caught up and then couldn't get to any of the stuff that I wanted to do today until about noon, so the day-to-day things always arise in addition. Chris Barshew, sitting here behind me, he's the detective sergeant, he's been there for, working back in the DB for 11 years now, so he's been a great resource of mine, trying to get affiliated with that division. He's in charge of our crime lab. We've also got three evidence technicians who work in the road patrol division. Chris supervises them, make sure that all their lab work and stuff in our crime lab is done, make sure that they have all the training that they need to do to keep up with the new developments in, in evidence. Chris will come out on our major crime scenes and manage the evidence there. He's got an unbelievable amount of experience, not only doing the evidence cases, but in the training that he's been involved in through Northwestern University. He does all of our multimedia needs as far as getting that for the prosecutor's office. The media does a fabulous job with the trial presentations. If you go into... If you go into a courtroom and there's a evidence presentation, that's Detective Sergeant Barshew who did that, does a great job. And then, he assists me a lot of times with case reviews and case management because that can be a, quite a job at some point in time. So, I'm going to stop there, and if you guys have any questions of me at this point in time.
Sonny?
Randy?
Yeah.
Do we get the best bang for our buck with the TNT? Or should we be, should we be doing this on our own?
You know, I think that there's a lot of other logistics that would need to be looked at as far as, you know, if we did go on our own and pull out, what other jurisdictions would we partner with other jurisdictions such as TCPC and maybe another county? I don't know who may be interested in doing that. The other things that come along with that are the purchase of, of more cars, things of that nature. So, I think we'd have to really sit down and just kind of look at the logistics of if we did do this, who's going to supervise that unit? Is it going to be a county sergeant? Is it going to be a supervisor from another agency? How is that going to be? So, I know that's something that, that the sheriff has been thinking about, and so that's been kind of on our minds. So, it's a good question. I think it would just need to take some serious thought and to look at, kind of crunch the numbers too and see. I think, I think ultimately, you know, we always want to make sure that we are focusing on the things that affect our county as much. And you always hate to have, you know, our, our resources going outside of the county to do things, but I think with TNT, we're getting those resources coming in because we're, we're basically the hub where a lot of this stuff is occurring.
He's pacing behind you to respond to.
Oh. I'll step aside. Thank you. I appreciate your attention.
The answer to your question is, we're looking, I am, I am concerned as you are, okay? We weren't going to bring it up, but yes, I've talked with the chief of police, I've talked with the chairman of the TNT board, I've talked quite a bit with Mr. Cooney. But it's, it's not something that's on the front burner right now. It's not on the back burner. It may be in the refrigerator, it's definitely not in the freezer. So, we're looking at that. You're right. Are we getting our bang for the buck? Well, I can tell you that the first thing is we're going to lose $42,000 from a federal grant if we don't participate with TNT. But can we make that up somehow? Seizures and those kind of things. It's, just talk, okay? But yes, we're, we're thinking about maybe a little more serious talk.
Other questions? Thank you. Nice job, Randy. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Captain Chris Clark. I took Randy's spot in the Field Services Division. I'm going to talk primarily about the patrol division today to you. You'll see within the patrol division, Field Services Division, we have approximately in 2013, $4.9 million in expenditures. Our expenditures affect the prosecutor, the jail, the courts, workload, and their revenue. Our 2014 expected revenue, 1.5, that comes from local grants through the townships, contract details, special events that we do, and also liquor inspections. County comparison, we're, we're, we're a little bit different than all the other counties that we've been compared to in the past. All these other counties, they have additional law enforcement agencies to pick up the workload in that county. We have one, Traverse City Police Department. Who do we provide the service to? We provide the service to everyone living, working, visiting, traveling through the Grand Traverse County, 75,000 residents, 3.3 million visitors at a cost of 5.13. You'll notice that on the townships, if you can see it, I put a percent number there. For example, Long Lake Township, 100% of the calls for services are handled by county-funded deputies. For example, Blair Township, 80% of the work is handled by county-funded deputies. The other 20% is handled by that contracted community police officer that the township's paying for. Who provides the service? I have one field services lieutenant, 18 community police officers, six road patrol sergeants, 23 road patrol deputies, currently have two vacancies, one administrative sergeant. You might wonder why it's broke down like this. We have a chain of command in place. We have deputies out there that have the potential to take someone's freedom, take them to jail, and God forbid, take their life. So, we need proper supervision and support, i.e. the field services lieutenant, administrative sergeant. He's responsible for the maintenance of 69 vehicles, ensuring that those deputies have the proper equipment to do their job. 2003 to 2013 personnel, you'll notice in 2003, we had a total of 68.
Excuse me.
Today, 2013, 66. And the reason I point this out to you is the next slide. In the last 10 years, our calls for service have gone up almost 11,000. I'm going to get into the difference of calls for service and, and law enforcement duties here soon. So, we were, we're handling call, 11, almost 11,000 more calls with two less people. Just to give you a brief snapshot in a 24-hour period, what we do it with, you'll notice the peaks. We identified the times of the day that the calls for service are coming in, the volume is more. So, we responsibly placed more resources at those times. You'll notice the valley, that's about the, the minimum number of deputies that we can have working without it being a safety issue to those deputies working or to the citizens that they're serving. Kind of breaking it down for you to answer your questions, we provide, we have two jobs. We either, one, enforce the laws of the state of Michigan, or we provide services, which is anything other than enforcing those laws. Breaking down our time for 2013, we had 15,980 hours of criminal investigation time at a cost of $550,000. Our non-criminal or civil investigation time, we had 9,024 hours at a cost of $311,057. I didn't want to add 42 slides of all the different statutes that indicate why we have to enforce laws in the state of Michigan, just briefly indicated this revised statute of 1846 for sheriffs, that the sheriff's office must patrol, monitor traffic violations, enforce criminal laws at the state, investigate accidents involving motor vehicles. Our law enforcement duties investigations for 2013, you'll notice the investigations, retail fraud, there's a star next to that, those increased within the last year. VCSA, that's the drug cases, those have increased. Obstruct justice cases have increased, and our OWI drunk driving, driving law license suspended, and traffic violations have increased in the last year. To kind of give you a snapshot of what it costs to do an investigation, a plain Jane larceny investigation for one deputy with no search warrants to do, no additional follow-up, costs about $93.75. Personal injury crash investigation, $126.16. Kind of explain to how, to you how it goes. When you get a call into dispatch and the dispatcher takes it in and the caller says there's a domestic assault, we send two deputies. Those two deputies get there, those two resources are used. If the investigation reveals that there's a domestic assault and an arrest needs to be made, that's going to equal 2.72 man-hours. If there's no assault, it's 51 mana, minutes. But we still have to deploy the same number of resources to that call until we get there and find out. Calls for service, these are things other than law enforcement duties, other than enforcing the laws. For 2013, we had 27,879. These calls utilize the sheriff's office personnel, resource, and time. Examples of those, a welfare check, someone calls and says there's someone sitting next to a building, we send either one or two deputies to that call. That's a resource being used. A 911 hang-up, we don't know what's going on, we still send one or two deputies. By law, that's not a crime as that call is coming into central dispatch and that deputy's being sent there. Drug overdoses, some resources we use there, deputy, sergeant, evidence tech, the detective and a command officer, those are resources that we're deploying for a non-law enforcement activity. Lost person is a non-law enforcement activity. It's not, it's not a crime. We still deploy deputy, sergeant, K-9, command officer, suspicious person. Suicidal persons, these resources, it can be very, very large, deputies, sergeants, commanders, K-9 detectives, evidence technicians, negotiators, emergency response team. Odd calls for service, we act, these are actual calls for service. Elderly woman called because her toilet was overflowing. Raccoon outside a hotel room door. But the, I want to point out to you these, that elderly woman could have no family, she doesn't know who to call. She calls dispatch, we're going to help her out. That raccoon outside a hotel room door, that could be a tourist visiting the Grand Traverse area. They don't know who to call. They call dispatch, we send a deputy. Those examples I gave you here, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Back to the raccoon. Why wouldn't you call the health department, refer that to animal control?
The health department isn't open past certain times of the day. So, if it comes in in the evening, we handle it.
You don't see raccoons.
They don't deal with raccoons.
That's animal control, not wild animal control.
Yeah. Our additional non-essential, non-mandated services, cost of $311,057. These are potential services that can be reduced or cut. You asked for some of this. The bold ones up there, those are crime deterrent activities, activities that are proactive that, that are going to hopefully reduce crime. And you're probably going to ask me, Chris, how have you done this the last couple of months with the hiring freeze and minus two people? What you're going to see is that our law enforcement time's going to go up, but those activities to reduce crime, traffic enforcement, neighborhood patrols, warrant attempts, that time's going to go down. And finally, there's my desk number. If you would like to do a ride-along, give me a call. And I'll set that up for you. Any questions? Okay.
I, I think we could just make a statement that Grand Traverse County has always been a county where public safety's been one of the, since I've been on the county commissioner for 22 years, one of the top priorities of the county commission in terms of making sure we got enough officers and we have, hopefully, a safe community where people want to visit and eventually stay here. In other counties, they have other problems. They, the counties don't fund road patrol, they have road patrol villages, and if they fail, they don't have road patrol, and they've just got miserable communities with boarded-up commercial units and high crime and high drug rates, and it's just a disaster. So, I, you know, I appreciate the presentation to the effect of what other things you do other than, that are not criminal-related that you get involved with. In other counties where they have budget problems, they've just made the decision, all right, we're going to stay with the criminal complaints and the civil, and those other types of non-criminal complaints, we're not going to respond to. So, I guess the question I sort of lay out, you know, is that having responded to those non-criminal complaints and responding to all calls going into dispatch, what part of, can you, can you give me a, a level of impact that would have if there was a line drawn some, at some place in those, in that non-essential area where we would say you would have to either refer the call to a different agency or not respond to them?
Well, first of all, I have to say, there probably isn't another agency to refer that call to a law enforcement agency. But this slide here, the false alarms, we go there, it may be a breaking and entering.
It could be, yeah.
It could be. The traffic enforcement, out there actively looking for traffic violations, that's going to, that is something.
Yeah, we need to keep that in.
911 hang-ups, we don't know if there is a spouse beating their spouse, but, but we have to go there to find that out. So, I, I don't know if I answered your question there, but there's, there's some variables to those.
I was just wondering if there were any internal meetings that said, these, these types, there probably is a longer list than what you have up on the sheet.
They're very long.
That you have said, all right, we're not going to respond to those calls. Is that true? Would that be true? Yes?
Well, we, we've talked about private property crashes, not responding to those. We still do at the point, but sometimes with private property crashes, we ask the parties to come to law enforcement center. That way, we don't have a deputy going there. So, that's one of the ones that we've kind of limited our response to.
And I'm assuming you, you would prioritize whether you're going to make a call to non-essential when you've got a number of calls that are essential.
And that's what, that's, that's why the sergeants are so key on, they, they are the filter for those calls, which ones have more priority over the other ones.
All right. Sonny?
Well, there's, I have two questions. The first one has to do with, you know, private property PDAs, you know, whether we're going to continue to deal with those. And the other one is the, the cars in the ditch, you know, because we all know that we're out there policing cars in the ditch, that there's truly no damage, they're just in the ditch, but they're still a traffic hazard. So, you know, they take up a lot of time, and it's not something we necessarily have to do, but it's something we're doing for the safety of our community. But the, one of the discussions that always comes up, you know, anytime I talk to the people in the community, is the personally assigned cars. And, you know, it, it comes up, you know, Nate and I have had the conversation, Tom and I have had the conversation, it just, it just always comes up around the thing, you know? And we, when we talk about, you know, maintaining cars, you know, it makes a big difference if we're maintaining 30 cars or we're maintaining 100 cars, you know? And I, you know, I personally support the concept, I always have, and I've been very vocal to that support. But, you know, it is still a question in our community of whether or not we can justify the take-home cars. And Nate's going to add to this too, and, and you know, and, and we all know that I, I have actively supported that concept from its, from its conception years ago and, you know, but it still always comes up in the discussion.
When the captain and the sheriff talked about this, they said that this would be brought up. And I said, no, well, because Sonny already has the answer. You can answer this question better than I can, probably, or as well as. And, you know, when we were at the budget hearing several weeks ago, there's a lady in the audience that was speaking, I believe on behalf of Parks and Recs, and said, quite frankly, we have too many cops in this county anyway. Remember that concept, that conversation?
I certainly do.
Yeah. We, we somewhat operate on a pie crust. We have 25 road patrol, well, county-funded road patrol officers that are spread across four, four shifts. Each one of them have take-home cars, as do the CPS. So, honestly, on a Wednesday going to work from Kingsley, when the guys have firearms training at Camp Pugsley, there's a probability that I'm going to drive by six or seven patrol cars on Garfield Road. So, if I'm a general, non-law enforcement citizen seeing seven patrol cars all heading south on Garfield Avenue or Garfield Road, my first inclination is to say, holy moly, look at all these cops. We don't need any cops in this, down there everywhere. It is a perception. When you look at our midnight cops in this. Down there everywhere. It is a perception. When you look at our midnight shift, there's three guys plus a sergeant on a midnight shift. Is that too many cops when you have a barricaded gunman? All of a sudden, you need the entire shift plus eight more guys there right now. It is a perception, and I'm happy for that. So, to my earlier conversation, I want to say to that lady, well, that feeling you have is-
Safety, and you're welcome.
That comes at a major cost. You know, right now, the take-home car policy, depending on gas prices at rack rate, which is, what, $3, or just a little under $3, it could be anywhere between $40,000 and $42,000 a year for those guys to take those cars to and from work. Is it worth it? Well, I can tell you this much. Many instances on those overlapping shift scenarios where the guys are coming and going, the first responder to a scene is a guy driving a patrol car, wearing jeans and a jacket. And they log those hours. We keep track of those hours. So, what does that service worth? Is it worth $42,000? I personally think it is. It's still, with the gas rates, the amount of cars that we have, they put on 20,000 miles a year per officer. If you take each car and make that car run three shifts 24/7, you're gonna put 60,000 miles on that car a year. You're gonna be changing cars a lot faster. And right now, we have cars that are 2004, 2005, 2006. They've got 180,000 miles on it because the guys take ownership in their cars. They know they're gonna have them for a long time, and they keep them well-maintained. So, I still think we're ahead of the curve on the take-home cars for the cost.
Well, and I've always supported the program, you know, and I truly believe that when somebody pulls into a subdivision, and in the third driveway into the subdivision, there's a patrol car, they go somewhere else, you know. And when you're driving into Traverse City and you're meeting cars coming out, when you're on your way to work, you're just meeting cars on the road, you don't know that that guy just got off work and he's on his way home. You just slow down, you know. And I absolutely support the process.
In fact, you'd like to come over here and support the process. I'd really appreciate that.
Well, I will. I always support the process.
I know. Chris?
I, too, support deputies taking their patrol cars home. However, the only, the major criteria I have is that the car needs to be parked outside, not in the garage. I've seen officers park their patrol cars in the garage, and I think, I don't think that serves a purpose at all. I like to see those cars out in the driveway where people see a presence, but that's just me personally. That's not my question. The sheriff mentioned that 80% of animal control calls come to his department. That being the case, why wouldn't it make more sense to have a deputy, assigned an extra deputy at the sheriff's department, since 80% of the calls are handled by your deputies anyway, and eliminate the two animal control officers, eight to five during the week, that just go out and do whatever they do, plus it would give you an extra officer when the need arises? I mean, it just seems to me that this would make more sense.
Let me just clarify that. I didn't say we handled 80% of the calls. I said that 80% of the time, okay?
Yes.
Animal control officers aren't working. They work a 40-hour work week. There's 168 hours in the week.
Right.
Okay? And with vacation and stuff, it ends up, they are, they are out of a year, a week, a month, whatever the case may be. They're working 20% of the time.
Right.
They're working 20% of the time. The other 80%, if something comes in, okay, we typically get those calls. Now, that doesn't mean that 80% of the calls come in when they're not available, okay? It's just that when they're not there, which is 80% of the time-
80% of the time.
Three o'clock in the morning, Saturday afternoon, Sunday, okay, they're not there, the call comes to us, okay? They don't have anybody on-call. There's a union issue, contractual issue, being on-call, paying call-in time, that kind of thing. So, the call would come to us. I understand what you're saying. Yes.
Yes, but sheriff, why wouldn't it make sense, since 80% of the time, they're not there anyway?
Takes five officers to-
Well, they could-
24/7.
I don't want to dis, I don't want to disparage their operation.
I'm not. I'm asking if it would make more-
If you're asking me, I would make the suggestion that maybe their officers work from noon until eight, make, maybe work some Saturdays or Sundays to spread out, you know, that coverage time.
I would not make the suggestion. I would want you and Wendy and Dave to sit down and take a look at it and make a recommendation. I'm just asking the question, it seems to me, if 80% of the time they're not available, maybe it might make sense to look at that.
Happy to do that. We've talked quite extensively about that, as you know, for a couple of years, and nothing seemed to move off-center. So, but-
Okay.
That's a different department, different division.
Other questions? Larry?
Just one quick clarification. When there's a complaint within the city limits, the city police are called by dispatch to handle those complaints generally.
Correct.
It's just, it's always been a traditional workout between the two departments. And if they need backup, then you guys are there to help them out.
Correct.
And vice versa.
Correct.
And so, you take care of the rest of the county. And where does the state police fit in on responding to calls, or don't they respond to calls?
I believe, well, the state police does respond to calls within the county. I think we handle 72% of the calls for service in the county. The city handles 26%, and the state police handles the rest. They don't have a post anymore in the county, so their resources are coming from Cadillac, unless that trooper lives in the county somewhere. Other questions?
I have one other question myself. Cross-deputization with the tribe.
Back to the sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
And you know that's been on my list of things to do for many years.
Yes. Well, this is somewhat a philosophical question. They have cross-deputization with the tribe in Leona County. They have a large population up there that live on the reservation. The dynamics here are a little different. They don't, we don't have that. It's just a business that they have, basically, in Williamsburg, and that's the casino. They used to have, I'm told, about 18 officers. Now, they're down to maybe six. And I think what they're trying to do is get us to handle their issues out in Williamsburg at the casino. We don't necessarily get any more money, other than, the other side of that is, they would like to sign a contract with us and give us some money for five beds in the jail. So, would that take care of the issues they have out there? There are some other issues that go along with that, you know, training issues that, you know, they would be, although, although the agreements they do have in place, everybody indemnifies everybody else, so nobody's ever gonna get sued by somebody else. Well, you know, that's not the case. So, we've been reluctant to do that. I know there's feelings on the board that they aren't paying taxes. Why should we go out there and, you know, why don't we go do some law enforcement services in Benzie County? You pay for them. We'll go down to Benzie County and help them out. You wouldn't like that. And so, it's similar to that. This is kind of in the freezer, in my book, at least at this point in time, with that cross-deputization. We haven't heard anything from the tribe. I know the board's not real happy with them with the land trust status, those kind of things. So, it's just up in the air. It'll probably bounce back down.
When we've had our meetings with the tribal chairman, that has come up a couple of times.
Sure, sure.
So, you know, I would still like to see us be able to maybe sit down and have that discussion with the tribal chairman and find out truly what is the opportunities there for us to be able to-
It is a one-sided conversation.
Yeah.
And it's always been a one-sided conversation.
I think, what does that do for us?
I don't know. That's, we need to ask that question.
Pretty much, pretty much nothing?
Well, I think-
Okay?
Could we-
Other than, you know-
Does it cover a deputy for us?
And we did make a proposal to them, I think, a couple of years ago, and have not heard anything back. Actually, I think it was probably just flat-out rejected. So, sometimes, you know, it's fine to talk, but it just has not moved off-center.
Very good.
A number of years ago, Grand Travers Band offered to pay for community police officer for Acme and Whitewater Township. They actually sent the check to Grand Travers County but would never sign the contract. We ended up returning the check to them because they, you know, they would not sign the standard agreement, intergovernmental agreement that we have with Blair Township and Garfield Township and all of the other townships have community police officers. The Grand Travers Band refused to sign it, so we returned the check.
I'd just like to be able to figure it out a time when we might be able to have that discussion again.
Waste of time. Quick question, Tom, a little different subject. You're looking at revenues. Why not perform police services for the city of Traverse City?
Well, um-
I could talk about that.
That could be done.
What are your thoughts on that?
Well, honestly, would that, how would that benefit the county, okay? It may benefit the city. It may, it may, it may benefit the city. Honestly, if you've been following the fire department proposal with the city and the metro fire department, there's a very vocal opposition there of citizens in Traverse City. I think you would see exactly the same thing. We've never looked seriously at that. Would it save, could it save the county money? At this point, I can't tell you. Yes, it would save Grand Travers County taxpayers' money. It may save, it may save the city taxpayers' money. But I think that's something that we don't want to push onto the city. I think if they're interested, they can come and ask, just like they've asked the fire department for, you know, hey, can you, all right?
You think you could save something in the middle-management area, though? That's what the administrator looked at before, command and stuff. Is there some duplication that could be saved?
Yes, yes. But it would-
Potentially be some money saved.
Well, but whose, okay?
Overall, for the county.
Well, not this board, but maybe overall for citizens in the county, okay? Primarily those in the city.
Prior to your election, Commissioner Rennie, and your election Commissioner Lathrop, we did have a discussion when Dennis Aloya was administrator about this very thing. And the board, pretty much at that time, stated that we would extend the same contract to the city per officer that we extend to the townships per officer, which would save city taxpayers a considerable amount of money, but it would cost county taxpayers a great deal more for their sheriff's department than they are paying presently because we do supplement our township officers. So, that is something I just felt the need to share.
Good, Dan.
I just want the sheriff to know that I am on-call 24/7. In fact, I just got, I got two calls during this meeting, yeah. So-
Weren't you supposed to turn that device off, beginning of the meeting?
Well, yeah, but, yeah. So, I, I'm hoping that the sheriff will take my ankle fracture calls.
When you're not available?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Tom.
Any other questions?
I have clarification here. It's now six minutes after five. Do we want, how long is the jail report gonna take with you, Captain Hall?
As short as you want.
Well, but we want to give you, you know, the quality time. So, and I'm just asking the board, what would you like to do?
I think Bob Forwarded is all a very thorough explanation of his department. You know, I think maybe, I think we should do it while we're here, as long as, if he's willing to do that. You know, this piece of information about what the daily lodging is, is interesting. And, you know, I think, we all know that statutorily, we have a responsibility to provide a jail, you know, and we do a damn good job.
As your chairman, I was just trying to figure out which way you wanted to go, so I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. That's fine. There's a couple of other budgets I'd like to speak very, very briefly about. Those are the recreational vehicle budgets. If you have any questions. The ORV budget, we have two. We have a DNR budget, which is 100% funded by the DNR. And we use that one officer in conjunction with the county's ORV budget, which is in place primarily to enforce the county's ORV ordinance. As you know, ORVs are allowed on the majority of county roads in the county. And with those two combined, although they are separate and distinct, we are able to hire one person for the summer. It's a seasonal position. We submit grant requests to the DNR for the ORV budget. They send us back, here's what you're gonna get. This year, we got a $10,000 grant. That pays for part of that officer. The other part of the time is paid for by the county. It works very well. Three days of work, he works for the state. Two days a week, he works for the county. We keep the budget separate. We keep the time separate. The other budget is the snowmobile budget. Again, a grant process. The funding split is 85% paid for by the DNR and 15% match with the county. The, this year's grant from the state was $8,200. With that, we put in $1,440, and we have snowmobile patrol throughout the winter on the trails in the county. We couple, the two most received, I guess you would say, comments that are snowmobile officers here on the trails. Number one is, boy, we're glad to see you out here. And from another group of people, it's, we can't go anywhere without seeing you out here, okay? They arrest people on the trails. They issue citations on the trails. And overall, the response to that program has been very good. And again, that's a grant-funded. The other is the marine safety section. That's a 75%, 25% split. Our historic, and I'll say historic, the last five, six-year grant from the state has been $75,000. We have recently shifted that sergeant's position out of there to give us a more accurate cost and accountability on how that program's runs. So, for the money we put in, 25,000, and it depends on the year, but consistently, it's been in about $75,000. They pay $75,000. We put in $25,000. Those are seasonal employees. And the only statutory requirements of the sheriff regarding to marine is the recovery of drowned bodies, livery inspections, and to enforce the county's boating control ordinances, which you have. One has been in effect since 1966. Basically, they're out there for law enforcement, to inspect boats, issue citations. We do contract and have for a very long time with Long Lake Township for one officer, very similar to the programs we have with the townships, for that officer to be on Long Lake on the weekends. East and West Bay, there's no DNR, minimal coast guard, excuse me, basically no coast guard or DNR patrols out there. The closest coast guard boat is in Chalaboy. So, we also teach boating safety classes, patrol marine events such as the cherry festival. And that whole recreational vehicle program, whether it's snowmobile, ORV, or marine, I took account today, and 24 of our 66 certified law enforcement officers started there. That's 36% of the officers we have. If you want to call it a training program, if you want to call it a minor-league program to being a real police officer, it doesn't make any difference. It's been very successful, and we are able to look at those officers, know what they do, get reports from their supervisors before they're hired. Deputy Flitten, sitting in the audience, started there some time ago, and there are others in the room that also started their law enforcement careers on a seasonal basis. Questions?
When Buck said it was a canoe.
It was a canoe.
Dugout canoe.
I just have a comment and not a question.
Go ahead.
I think we need to remember that back when we started the community policing program and the federal government came out with the three-year program to entice communities, to, to really get a stronger grip on crime levels and throughout the country, they got, they got these three-year programs going where, you know, we had a three-year phase in for new officers. I believe, Sonny's going to have to remind me of the date, but there was a year, I think somewhere close to 2000 or below, before that, the county board of commissioners said, we're not going to, when that program came into place, add new general funded officers. We're going to add them by community policing officers, of which we're getting one heck of a bang for, even for the first three years of the cost sharing, but also for the cost sharing of these other officers, as we've grown 10,000 people in the last 10 years. We can't forget about that. So, how much more can they give up when they have not, when we've, when we have split the cost of, of the coverage that is necessary for the sheriff's office with the townships at a reduced cost, rather than us funding the full amount? And we have not added any general officers since the program started. It had to have been 12, 12, 15 years ago. With regard to the jail, the last study that we had done with a jail expansion committee, one of the indication reports were that based on the studies from other counties, our same size, our same crime rate, same pattern, levels going into jail, that we were short the number of corrections officers that we really should have in place for, you know, for operational purposes and liability and safety purposes. And they've held the line. And what's complicated, both sides of that equation is the continued turnover we've seen in the corrections division and the, and the road patrol division, going to other departments that have defined benefit programs, those kinds of things, where we cut that off in 2001 to a defined contribution versus defined benefit. So, you know, I'm, you know, having sat in this chair for my 22nd year, I just don't know, especially with the chairman saying that, you know, reading an article, that over the next 10 years, we're going to continue to increase in population, and we've increased 10,000 over the past 10 years, and we've gotten the dividend from the community policing program. I just can't see, and they've held the line on general funding, on the general budget, for 12 or 15 years. I just can't see us taking anything off, more off the road or off, out of the, out of the jail. I just, I just can't see it happening. I think they're operating below minimum standards in both cases, and I don't want to get to a situation where we get, where there's a concern for officer safety or public safety in our community.
Okay. Captain Hall?
I'm Captain Bob Hall. I'm the jail administrator. I'm your keynote speaker today. I've been a keynote speaker.
That's why he's dressed in pink.
Yeah.
It looks purple to me.
It's mauve. Oh, excuse me. Mauve. I sent, electronically sent each of you a, copied my presentation to try to save paper in the budget. I'm going to, I'm not going to read the whole thing, because we, in the interest of time, I'm just going to highlight, you know, the laws say the sheriff has to run a jail. I gave you the case laws, federal case law, US Supreme Court, and Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, that sets forth the guidelines of what we can and cannot do and how we do everything we do in the jail. As well, the Michigan Legislature conferred upon the Michigan Department of Corrections the authority to oversee the county jails all throughout the state. And I gave you a list of all the areas that we have to comply with and show that we're complying with inspections and, and certain criteria, to the point that every year, we're audited by the state, and we have to be 100% in that audit. If we're not, the Department of Corrections has the authority to take us to court and demand that we become compliant, or if we're that far out of compliance, they can, they can shut us down until we are compliant, which would mean farming out all of our inmates to other counties. So, we're very fortunate that we are 100% compliant, and we intend to stay that way. One of the important rules, the administrative rules, addresses staffing, and I, and I specifically put that in your packet, which pretty much says that we have to have the staffing that we currently have or more, in order to be able to do everything that we're required to do or should be doing to the standards that are expected out of a jail. The interesting thing is, it says a sufficient number. The state won't tell you what that sufficient number is until you start having problems, and then they'll tell you that you were insufficient. And then that'll set the new standard. So, we hope to keep going as we have. In the corrections division, excuse me, we currently have the captain, a lieutenant, the assistant jail administrator, seven sergeants, one of whom's the administrative sergeant, 34 corrections officers, and two office civilian specialists. As Mr. Inman indicated, Dennis Lieber did a staffing study during the time that we did the Blue Ribbon Committee era, and found that we are 11 officers shy of what we were supposed to have in order to perform the functions to the level that's expected of jails throughout the United States. When we built or remodeled the last section of the jail, added another 39 beds, there was another work post established over there that had to be staffed 24/7. Mr. Lieber said you needed 5.5 was the shift relief factor, which took into account vacations, sick time, training, whatever. And the, the board at the time authorized five people, so it added another half a body deficit to our already short. Again, we tried to, part of our problem in the jail is it's an old linear jail, for the most part, and it's very staff-intensive. The way it's laid out, Mr. Bendick can attest to how staff-efficient the new podular direct supervision jails are. We have cells that are butted up against each other, and the only time an officer is present in that housing unit, when he's doing his hourly check or in there for some other issue. The rest of the time, they are virtually left to supervise themselves, which is not a good thing. I answered your questions. Who are our customers? The inmates, obviously, but everybody else. The courts, the law enforcement agencies we deal with, the public, family of the inmates, other agencies, the hospitals and doctors that we interact with for care for the inmates. The list goes on. How many are served at what cost? We have a, we're a rated capacity of 194 beds. In the last couple of months, we've been averaging about 160 inmates per day in the jail, sometimes more. We hit 191 here a couple of months ago, which caused us to have to board some inmates out. We just didn't have the room. I gave you a list, which I will not go through unless you want me to, of some of the functions that our officers and our staff do. It's quite extensive, and it was just a sampling of everything. If you want me to, I can go, but if not, we'll just go right by that. No? Okay. I gave you a handout, which I thought was really interesting. We took a snapshot, if you will, of our jail population this morning at roughly 11 o'clock, I believe it was. And in that snapshot, we had 157 inmates in the jail. 121 were male, 36 female inmates. For years and years and years, we averaged anywhere from 15 to 20 female inmates. Most recently, this is almost twice the normal amount that we've been historically having in the jail. I think they just felt it was, they wanted equal time in our jail or something. I'm not sure what, but we got as high as 46, I think, female inmates here a month or so ago in the jail.
Doesn't that also create a problem on where you can locate them in the jail?
Problem with our jail is it's not laid out for vast separation by gender. The section of the jail that was originally remodeled or constructed for female housing, we fill that up real quick with 20, 24 inmates, and the rest have to go somewhere else in the jail. They end up sharing cells adjacent to male inmates. They're separated with a barrier, but they can still converse with each other. The jail is just built that way. So, it, it does cause some issues for us. 74 sentenced, 83 pre-sentenced. The interesting number is the 76 felony and the 81 misdemeanor. When I started, and I know it was a long, long, long time ago, we had about 90% of the inmate population were misdemeanors. We had about 10% felonies. Now, we're almost 50/50. And to give you some example of some of the people that we do have in the jail, I had my sergeant just give me the list of some of the more serious crimes that we have in the jail. And you can see, our jail population is very, very dangerous. Very dangerous. Arson of occupied dwelling, domestic assault by strangulation, unlawful imprisonment, felonious domestic violence, assault with intent to do great bodily harm less than murder. And these are, are not your, your run-of-the-mill shoplifters, drunk drivers. I mean, these are very serious people. They have very little regard for others or themselves. So, it takes a very intense effort on the part of the corrections staff to interact with these people and keep them under control. We have to watch how we move them, who, who we move them near. We have keep separate lists. Some inmates, if they got into the same hallway together, would try to kill each other. So, we have these lists that we can't move them to sick hall or to visiting or to programs if another inmate's passing in the hallway. We have to constantly watch that. So, managing that jail population, you don't read about riots or the roof blowing off because of the excellent work the corrections staff does over there, but it's intensive. When you get done with a eight-hour shift over there, you know you've, you've worked. And it's, it's tested every element of your professionalism. The number of inmates with mental health issues, we had 20 inmates with documented mental health issues, and that's 12 and a half percent of the jail population right now. Three of them with severe psychosis issues. Those are management problems for us, too, that create issues in the jail.
Is mental health in on some, on those?
Mental health's working really closely with all these people. They're the ones that identify these people for me when I brought them.
Can you tell us how much time community mental health actually puts in in our jail to deal with these 12% of these populations?
They have a caseworker that comes over who's an interview or assessment officer. She's there 20 hours a week, roughly, three, four hours a day, five days a week. We have a psychiatrist that is not through mental health, that comes in and deals with the, the real serious cases, with the prescribing of the medications, the psychotropic meds, and doing follow-up and working with our medical staff for interaction with any medications they may be on. Every now and then, if it's a CMH client, they will see their people, but we have to take them across town to the CMH facility. They won't come into the jail to do that. So...
I'd still like to think about the possibility that if we're not getting the services that we require from the community mental health, that we should contract to do that and send the bill to mental health or reduce our appropriation to them by that amount.
Is that a motion?
Can't do that.
You know we can't do that.
You know what? I'm not so sure that they want to go to court for something like that, and neither do we. So, I think we, we need to come to a better resolution. When we're spending $600,000 to the community mental health and we're not receiving the services that we absolutely need, particularly in our jails, we need to have a better resolution on what's at. And I understand the governor or somebody has sent a resolution on mental health that might increase the capacity for mental health, mentally ill people in our communities. I'm hoping that that will help a little bit. I don't know where it's going to go, but, you know, Charlie's on that board, and I think, you know, Sonny and I both have been, and before that, Rob Henshaw was, hello, we're not getting the services. Let's figure out how to get it better. And so, maybe we just have to get to the point where we start to bill them for it and, and hire the person that needs to be done to be able to have it done. I don't know how else we can get around it. Dave?
I just want to, Bob mentioned there's 194. The design rated capacity of the jail is 194 beds.
Correct.
That has implications for Jail Overcrowding Act. So, we have to hit 194 for seven days or be-
Five, five days.
For five days. And then the Emergency Overcrowding Act kicks in, and the judges have to kick out some inmates, or we have to board them somewhere or whatever. But that includes the work release area, which is 26 beds, which-
Close.
Which minimum security, medium security, maximum security inmates cannot be in. It's only work release, and that's all it can be used for. So, right now, we're using spaces inside the jail for work release people. We are not using the work release area. So, our real capacity is 168 beds, and the law will tell you, and Captain Hall will tell you, that really that number is about, that's 100%. The 90% of that number is really the real capacity, because you got to have the, the beds open when the new people come in. So, that number puts us down to about 151 beds. So, at 157 today at 11 o'clock is actually overcrowded.
I have people sleeping on the floor, on mats on the floor, because I ran out of beds. When you, when you exceed 80 to 85% of your capacity, you start losing your flexibility to classify inmates and keep them separate the way you want to and the way you need to. If I have a maximum security female, the smallest cell I have available in the general population is a six-person housing unit. If I put her in there, I can only put five other maximum security females with her. If I don't have them, I've lost the use of five beds. And that's our problem over there.
Co-ed cells.
The other thing you've done is you've contracted out your medical, have you not?
Yes. I think, I think everyone knows the reason why these services that we perform are important. I won't elaborate on that. Changes in legislation coming up soon. The state's looking at allowing jails to house up to two years. This hit once before, and it's now got legs and it's running again.
An unfunded mandate.
Yeah. The second is a, they're going to form a sentencing guideline commission again. They're going to relook at all the sentencing guidelines. And what that does is, I've never seen them add greater, steeper sentences on crimes. They're looking at reducing some of the sentences they do have on crimes to allow the judges to put them in county jails rather than the state facility. And I don't see that as changing.
It's not going to be a benefit to us, I'm pretty sure of that.
It's going to be just the opposite. Demographic changes that will impact, again, the Institute for Research on Labor, Employment, and Economy at the U of M, study projected a 34 increase, 34% increase in Grand Travers County population by the year 2040. Again, as population goes up, so does the exposure to criminal activity, which ultimately they end up in the jail. Potential revenue, there was some mention about fingerprinting. We used to charge everybody a fee for fingerprinting, and several years ago, someone on the county board thought that was a double dip, since the county citizens are paying the wages of the officer taking the prints and the, and the equipment. That we stopped taking, or accepting fees or charging fees to county residents for concealed pistol licenses, or I'm sorry, business registrations, business licenses, insurance licenses and things like that. So, if we were to reestablish that, we anticipate increasing our revenue about $13,000 a year. Again, the more directed effort to collect reimbursement money from inmates, which this board hopefully will adopt tonight, and we'll get running on that. We're already gearing up for that. We, I've heard anywhere from $100,000 to $180,000. I'd be happy with $100,000 as a starting point, and if we hit the $180,000, that's even better. The sheriff made mention of video visitation. The new thing that's happening around the nation is video visitation. Right now, if an inmate's family or friends want to come and visit, they have to show up at the jail, register, go through security to come into a section of the jail, and they talk to the inmate through glass, by phone. When they're done, they leave. That's, with this old facility, we can only have six people visiting at a time, because the visitation room only had to handle six. And we have to keep people separated, so sometimes it is even less. The new system is kind of like Skype. It's like a computer. They would put a monitor and a handset in every housing unit. People on the outside would call and register for a time that they can visit. People on the outside would call and register for a time that they can visit. Somebody would touch the computer and make it happen. They'd light up on both sides, and now you're sitting there and you're talking to your grandmother down in Detroit. There's a revenue attached to that. There's like a ten-dollar fee for a half-hour visit. You can't drive from Detroit to Traverse City and visit for ten dollars, right? Plus, we'd be able to have visitation almost anytime, because it's not staff-intensive to bring these people in, and it's not tying up our visitation area. We could do something else with the physical plant. So we're looking at that, too. We're waiting for a proposal from one place as a feasibility. If it looks good, we may go out for our RP and ask for all these different companies as to what they would, what they would charge to put it in. Some of them do it for free, depending on how many stations you want. Otherwise, there might be a cost for the stations. Potential for outsourcing emerging with other entities. We already do much of the jail that way. I put on there the food service. Used to be, years ago, the sheriff's wife prepared the meals for the inmates.
Yes, she did.
That went away a long time ago, and then they started hiring out, and we've had ever since, about forty-some years. The current vendor we contract with, every three years we renew it to make sure we're getting the best price for the service. Medical services, up until 2010, the county had its own nurses. We had a lot of issues with that, and we could not keep up on the training requirements. Nobody knew what they were supposed to have for training. When the one nurse left, we had nobody to run the jail medical program. We outsourced it to a managed healthcare correctional facility that's national, and they take all of that as well as a lot of the liability with them. So they staff it, they recruit, they hire, discipline, train, they take care of all that, so.
With the Affordable Care Act, how is that going to affect our medical cost?
Well, there was only one element of it that's really going to help us, and that was in the Medicaid. Right now, with an inmate, if a person's arrested and they come in and they're on Medicaid, up until January, did it change already? Up until January first, soon as they were arrested or incarcerated, their Medicaid stopped, all right? County had to pick up everything if the person didn't have any money. Under the Affordable Care Act, the Medicaid will continue until he or she are found guilty. And a lot of our healthcare service that we provide are for freshly arrested people that are not taking care of their health on the outside. They come in presenting a lot of physical issues that we need to stabilize, and Medicaid would help that. Problem is to get them the research, and Lieutenant Monroe's been doing a lot of research for me. The research on the Medicaid, a lot of jails are not able to do this unless they have one or two people primarily dedicated to researching, because you've got to provide documentation of your age, your birth, all these things that, these inmates aren't bringing into the jail with them. So there's a lot of outside research that has to be done to get them even signed up for that program. So I'm not sure what kind of benefit that's going to be to us.
Can't the medical provider provide that?
Medical provider can't provide that.
I mean, you're contracting with them, why can't they do that for you?
They're not going to have, they're there to provide emergency medicine, basically, to the inmates. They're not there to, and they will bill if the person does have Medicaid, but they don't have the resources to be able to go to this person's house and get his driver's license, get a copy of his birth certificate, his W-2 forms to show his, you've got to be a certain level of the poverty level, and you have to establish that with all that. They're not, they're not going to do that.
Captain, how, how many of these incidents, and I'm just asking for your estimation, are alcohol-related?
Alcohol-related?
Eighty percent. Not anymore.
I would say most of the inmates I have in the jail are there for either alcohol-related offenses or they were under the influence when they committed the offense.
Eighty percent of them are drunks, the other, they're twenty percent of them are for crimes they committed while they were drunk.
I see.
Yeah, I don't have an exact answer for that.
I was just curious.
There's a lot of alcohol-related issues or drug. Commissary inmate resident banking, we used to run our own commissary, and that was a nightmare. The inmates are able to do that now. And the electronic banking tracks their money to a penny, thanks to the help from the finance department. Everything that we take from the inmates, we transact more than a million dollars a year of inmate money that comes through our jail. And that all goes into a safe, and then from there on, the finance department takes care of it. All the tracking of the money and doing the transmittal over to the treasurer's office, and then it gets put into the bank. And we have smart cards that we give them when they're released that they can use anywhere, like a debit card. So used to get checks, and nobody would cash their checks, because they didn't have the proper ID on the checks. Inmate programs since the early nineties, substance abuse, alcohol programs, life skills classes, religious programs, we have a slate of programs, and I'm happy to announce that just at the first of the year here, we were able to reestablish our GED program, which we've been lacking for the last year and a half to two years, because our GED instructor passed away, and we couldn't find anybody. And we found some people that were interested in teaching GED until they found out that it would be in a jail, and then they kind of lost interest real quick. So hopefully, we're up and running with this lady again, and we're excited about it. Inmate phone system, the inmate telephones, we used to bring an inmate out, give him one call a week. We'd walk him down the hallway, dial the number for him, and let him talk to his loved one, and then take him back to the cell. A lot of legwork. Now, we now have a telephone in every housing unit. The inmates use the phone, and they're collect-only phone calls. It's an institutional phone system. People on the other end get billed on their monthly bill, the cost of the call. It's a revenue that's producing just shy of a hundred thousand a year to the county, so it's a pretty good revenue source. Plus, it provides us a wealth of investigative tools, because everything is recorded. And you'd be surprised how many people talk to each other and tell them where they hid the stuff they stole. That's amazing. Prisoner transportation, we have a working agreement with Lethalaw in Wexford County. Anytime we're heading south, if they have an inmate that needs to go south, they bring the inmate to us. We combine and save an officer on the trip. And it really helps us, because most of the time, we have two, three stops to make on the way back that are not related to Lethalaw County, and they're with us, so it was very nice of them. Talked about court officers. I know we've had discussions with some of you regarding court officers. Our officers are in court sporadically. The courts do an excellent job of giving us schedules that they know of, but their schedules change at a moment's notice, too. It's like the emergency that comes in, you've got to change the schedule. Somebody wants to enter a plea, and it might cancel the trial. They've got to have a court officer take the inmate over to court, and they enter the plea. So we are at their beck and call for bailiffs, but we don't have bailiffs in the court twenty-four, or eight hours a day, five days a week. They may, we may have three, four in the morning, and then maybe one part-time in the afternoon, but when they're not there, they're back in the jail doing jail work, corrections officer work. So if a corrections officer's in the courtroom acting as a bailiff, if you look up the definition of the bailiff, what they're supposed to do, they're supposed to protect the judge, protect the court recorder, protect everybody in the courtroom. We are tasking our bailiffs with a secondary task of transporting inmates, and it could be as many as four or five, over to court for something, and then watching them at the same time they're supposed to be protecting everybody else. I know there was some discussion about, well, could these officers be used to replace the people at the front door for security of the courtroom or the courthouse? If there was a problem developing at the front of the courthouse where you enter into the building, these officers that are in the courtroom cannot leave the courtroom. And they certainly couldn't leave their five inmates alone while they're running out there or when they came back. There won't be five inmates there, I guarantee you. They'll be gone.
They'll be hard, they won't be hard to find, because they're all chained together.
No, they're separate. The judges won't let us use the long chain anymore.
They're dressed similarly.
Do we get rid of the chains?
We don't use them. They're in belly chains and usually leg restraints, but I still say if I can't catch somebody in leg restraints, it's time to leave. Their work, they take a significant amount of our time, but we can't always predict how much time that's going to be. Based on advanced schedules, we will ramp up our schedules to make sure I've got people there today to cover that. But then at the last second, sometimes the trial will cancel. Now I've got officers on the schedule there that I really wished I had last week on a schedule on a day where we had unknown extra court. So courts are very difficult for us to deal with. Basically, I'm saying if we were to look at getting bailiffs, and I know there's discussion of that, if it was at the expense of corrections officers, it would hurt us. In addition to, it would help us, at least at the onset. But replacing them one for one with a corrections officer doesn't allow me to bring that person back and work in the jail as a corrections officer when there is no court and the court's done, so. How would I implement a general fund budget reduction? We have a five-million-dollar budget in the jail, and all of that, about four million of it is personnel-related. About one million is operational. Out of the one million, more than eight hundred thousand is directly related to inmate care and treatment, medical, food, clothing, bedding, laundry, things that the inmates have to have. That leaves about two hundred thousand to cover all of the other operational needs, which is the equipment, contracts for service for electronics, repair of equipment, officer uniforms, anything else that we have there. And there's, that's really bare bones. We keep it really tight. Mr. Bot makes sure I keep it really tight. I watch my budget closely, and then he watches me watch my budget, so. I don't see where the jail could afford any impact at all of any significance. Finally, to close out, which services are mandated or not mandated and could be discontinued? Court officer service is mandated, but it doesn't say it has to be a corrections officer. But if it's not the corrections officers, who's going to do it? Yeah, you're going to send road officers over there or detectives? Maybe the sheriff will come over and run the courts for me? It just makes more sense to have it right there, because we have to transport the inmate anyway. Usually, the inmate's right in our custody, so. Second is transport officers, same thing. Transport officers, the inmates have to get picked up all around, all around the state. In some places, they only will hold them for a few hours until we get there, and some places let them go, because I can't get somebody down there as quick as they want them out of their jail. Some jails are under federal court order for overcrowding. They can only keep outside arrested individuals for outside charges for up to twenty-four hours. So within twenty-four hours, I have to send two people down, pick them up, get them back up here to stand, be adjudicated on our charges. Makes it difficult. We try to drag our feet as long as we can on some of these, hoping somebody else will call and say they've got somebody that was arrested on our warrant, and after a day or two, we send them down. Never fails, we get back, the next day, three more pop up in the same place, and we could have picked them up yesterday. Again, you can't, you can't, can't predict that. If an inmate is sentenced to do state time in the state prison, we take them down, we have to take them down and turn them over to the prison system, and you're supposed to do that with due haste, I think the law says. So the longer you hold off, we try to hold it off and combine it with other trips to make it cost-effective. But there's times we have three transports going on simultaneously. We may have a transport team heading up to Petoskey and Sheboygan at the same time, and other team's taking four or five down to Jackson and going to Ann Arbor and Flint, and another one's taking somebody to a doctor's office or to the dentist. And we have all these things happening simultaneously. The lieutenant and I, on many occasions, I say, "What are you doing today?" He goes, "Why?" I said, "We're going on a prisoner trip, because we just ran out of bodies, and we'll take the prisoner trip." So transporting inmates takes a lot of our time. A lot of our trips are overtime trips, because we just don't have the staff available to pull off the staff and send them on a trip, so. And then the sheriff alluded to the warrant verification and updating that central used to do, and the sheriff's department inherited, and we were the ultimate end of the inheriting track. And with everything else we were doing, we didn't have the time to devote another body to validating and verifying warrants and such, so. I just want to close by saying we're rarely at full staff. I always seem to have one or two people off for some reason or another. I have one on light duty today. I have another one going off here shortly to have surgery done on both knees, one at a time. They're going to be off for about six to eight months. Seems like we're always behind the eight ball, trying to keep everybody healthy and there at the same time. No one grows up wanting to be a corrections officer. That I know of, I didn't. I mean, what do you want to be when you grow up? I want to be a corrections officer. And nobody does that. It's a special person who can work in that negative environment every day. You want to talk about making sure that you're on your A-game every day? If you change a one to a two on a form or in the computer or miss a release date, that translates into hundreds, if not millions, of dollars of liability to the county. Each officer has to be on their A-game every day, and it's very tough. The less staff we have, the harder they work and the more exposure they have to error. And error in our business, there's no room for it, so. Any questions?
Questions, Dan?
I spent about two hours with Captain on Friday before we got kicked off with the snowstorm, but honestly, I don't think there's any room to take a dime from this guy. He's doing a great job. I don't even know how he does it.
It's not me, it's everybody else that's working in there.
It's nice of you to say, but it's, I was very impressed, and you do a lot of stuff with just a few people. I don't think there's any room in your budget to take a dime from you.
Any questions, Sonny?
Bob, when we built the district court building, we specifically designed two security cells in there. Those are not being, or four security cells in there. Those are not being utilized in any fashion, correct?
They're not being used. One's being used as a storage room. They're not being used the way they were supposed to be. And the reason for that is they're regular cells, they're regular jail cells with cameras and everything that come back into the jail. The judges want their bailiff in there so they can keep things moving, and for us to use it, we would have to take this inmate, walk him down the hall, put him in the room, get another inmate out, and bring them out for the next court hearing. And if somebody is being relegated to jail who was out in the street, of course, he still or she still has all their property on them, we can't commingle them in the same room. There's only one per courtroom. We'd have to go to a different courtroom and use that one for a different gender, and they have to be searched. We have to take their property from them, put them somewhere, and that takes the officer out of the courtroom, and the judge doesn't want to do that. We'd have to have a second officer over there just to move inmates back and forth, as well as the bailiff. And we just don't have the bodies, so we haven't used them.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank your staff for what they're doing. Is there anything else presented by you, Sheriff?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Nope.
Next, we will have public comment. Anybody from the public like to make comment? Okay?
Motion, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No, we're going to come back in...
Ten minutes.
Nine minutes.
Pizza's over in the corner.
Nine minutes.
Okay.
Stand up.[1762.42]